Y'all, if he comes back, I'm gonna be so proud of y'all making it in ten minutes.
Cause I think he's ready to roll.
You're ready to roll. Okay. Yes, you are. Don't you soften it.
I am.
No?
Except for, you know, my whole thought about that. I can roll with it, I can't with the trips and but I need it. Especially after we just spent two and a half.
I am, I'm gonna do it if you're with me.
Interesting stuff.
Call us back into session. Thank you for your expedience, counselors, commissioners, counselors, commissioners. We have lost council quorum, which means Mr. Shimp, you get to do this again. Sausage making is tough and ugly to watch, but we got through that. I don't know how well, but we'll see what happens. The next item on the agenda is SP eighteen dash zero 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 one nine oh one River Road SUP request. Shimp Engineering, on behalf of Go Store It River LLC owner, has submitted an application seeking approval of a special use permit SUP. Request for the property located at nine oh one River Road with frontage on River Road and Bellevue Avenue. The proposal requests to allow for increased residential density as well as a self-storage company pursuant to City Code Section thirty four dash four eight oh, where self-storage is allowed via a special use permit and density in excess of twenty one dwelling units per acre DUA is, oh gosh, allowed up to sixty four DUA via a special use permit if residential density is associated with a mixed-use development as indicated in Section thirty four dash four fifty eight. The proposal indicates a total of fifty four residential units, which equates to twenty five DUA calculated with respect to entire development site, two point two zero three acres, as defined by Section thirty four dash four fifty eight. The property is further identified on City Real Property Tax Map as forty nine, Tax Map forty nine parcel ninety eight, the subject property. The subject property is Zoned Industrial Corridor District. The site is approximately two point two oh three acres or ninety five thousand nine hundred and sixty three square feet. The comprehensive plan designates the land use of the subject property as business and technology.
I will be staff giving, yes, I will be staff. Heather, this is one of the last things that she did before she left us is she finished up the reporting aspect for this project. She has, she has been with this project for all four iterations. And the report, I think, does a really good job of taking you through each of the proposals that have come forward. This proposal is slightly different than the previous in the uses that are being proposed at this point in time. One being a four-story multifamily building with fifty four residential units, including a fifteen hundred-foot retail space. And this building would be closer to River Road and then a four-story self-storage building located at the rear of the site. I'll hit a couple of the highlights and then I will assist with questions. Please do excuse if I have to look things up a little bit more. I'm not in the weeds as much on this one, but we will find the answers that we need to move forward. I just gave a rundown of the specifics of the project itself. There is information in here noting that, that there's potential for this, well, there, there is conformance with the comprehensive plans intent for business and technology area in that a self-storage company is a commercial use that generates a smaller amount of traffic than other consumer-oriented commercial areas. So that's one of the considerations that Ms. Newmeyer put forth here. She highlighted the different road typologies for River Road versus Bellevue. And one of the items that has been a large discussion point throughout this process is the sidewalk project and how that's going to be coordinated in the parking on Bellevue. So that has been outlined in the report. Another consideration has been the environmental aspects of the site and how stormwater and how the different mitigating factors are going to take place on the site as well. So we've received a number of public comments and that's been throughout the, the full process of this application. There's been concern from the neighbors about traffic and buffering and consideration for, for crosswalks within the application. And there's been concern about the use of a self-storage facility in this location. I know we received a number of comments from the public today over email. I'm guessing we probably have a few folks who are here from the public hearing standpoint as well to share their perspective. So the recommendation for this at this point is that if the commission decides to move for approval, that there are a number of conditions that have been added onto the list. The first one having to do with sidewalk improvements, making sure that those are done in accordance with the pedestrian plans that are already in place. Curb ramps on Bellevue and sidewalk improvements, while I talked about those along Bellevue. And then there's been quite a bit of discussion about handling the environmental factors, water treatment on site. And the reason I'm not going into as much depth on this and I can as we have questions is this has been an application that has been before you all in a couple of formats recently. So I didn't want to get too much into the weeds because you all are pretty familiar with the site and the different aspects of things that have come forward. And I know that our applicant has, has a presentation that will provide some highlights as well, including how this product, this iteration of the project is different for your clarity purposes. So I'll open it for any questions you guys may have.
I was just curious, especially looking on Google view of the, of the map. Where are all the cars that are currently parked and housed right there? How is that gonna have an impact on the rest of the community once this project is redeveloped?
Well, that's definitely a consideration. This is the front page of, and you're looking at Google Maps, but this is the front page of their proposal. And you can see in here the cars that are there and those are cars that are associated with the, the car repair place there. And I want to say from past discussions that there was some agreement that had taken place of some sort as to why the cars are there, but those cars will no longer be there if this development were to occur. So they will have to go someplace else and there may be some perspective the applicant has on what that is or it may be, I'm sure it links back to the concerns that the neighbors have shared with us.
Thank you. I have a question about the packet. There's the comments, I guess these were comments sent to the applicant. And I keep seeing something in bold saying, "Repeat comment, repeat comment, repeat comment." Does that mean these things were never addressed or we never got addressed?
So the comment, the comment papers that you're referring to are in reference to the site plan that's under a separate review. And so the, when it says, "Repeat comment" on there, it means that that comment has been on previous iterations of the comment letters and it remains to be addressed in the site plan.
So it's yet to be addressed?
Correct.
Okay. And we had a, in our pre-meeting, there were some questions about, one of the things that we do remember from this past couple of different iterations of this plan is the on, the treatment of water on-site because it is so close to the river. And has that, I didn't see where that had been addressed any differently in this plan as it had in the past.
I'm not aware of any difference at this point.
It looks, looks like they actually did agree to do some on-site remediation in some of the previous, some of the previous.
Previous iterations, yeah.
They, they, they're looking to do nutrient credits in this one.
I want to, I want to say it was maybe the second version where, where that was a consideration. And then, then that changed from the third one and continues to change from this one or continued to, it's not on-site at this point.
Any other questions for staff before we have the applicant?
Ms. Creasy, did the neighborhood weigh in on this either for or against?
They provided concerns. And so the, the comment letters that we noted today, one of the prevailing concerns over the, the last couple, and you all have all had the opportunity to review those, had to do with the use of the self-storage in that area.
Any other questions? If the applicant would come up and please remind you of the ten-minute presentation time limit. Do you have a, okay.
Good evening, my name is Justin Shimp. I'm the engineer of this project. I'll start with one, one thing you should know is like some of these, the comments come up in today from the neighbors. I actually haven't seen those, so you'll have to ask me about what those are and I can try to address them. We've heard, we've had numerous neighborhood meetings, we've talked to folks, we've tried to accommodate the major concerns in neighborhood, but there may be a few you've seen that I don't, I've never seen before. So, but we can deal with that after the presentation. When it comes to the stormwater, that's wrapped up in that condition that the staff has proposed, which would require the onsite. And we're fine with that. We accept all four of the proposed conditions as reasonable.
Let me, let me interrupt you. Is that, does that work? Does that resolve the issue that I've got? He, he just indicated that he accepts all four conditions.
Mr. Mitchell, let's, let's, let's let him get his presentation and then we'll ask questions for him.
Okay, sorry.
Cause he's only got ten minutes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So you're all familiar, well, many of you on the commission, this came through previously as a storage-only project. A few of you were not. And so just overview of the site, I think you're familiar from the satellite images. It's sort of just old cars pile up there and unused building and it's not particularly useful or producing a lot of tax revenues right now or doing anything that productive. We'll come, more context through, there's the, the site. You've got the Tractor Supply, Larry's Auto, CrossFit, some of the commercial uses around it. Mostly, I think, R two and R one neighborhoods to the backside of the property. Future land use map. This has been sort of interesting in that this is the current adopted one. It has it as business and technology, which, you know, has been interpreted as more commercial, but then certainly recognizing the discussions that have gone on about the new comp plan. Not necessarily applicable at this moment, but there was a desire stated from the planning commission to have more intensity of use the site, which is unusual. We normally hear the opposite, but in this, but in this particular case, what we heard was the storage alone really didn't do enough for the site, didn't do enough for the street. And that's why we kind of stepped back and thought of something different, which is this new proposal, which is quite a bit different. Get to those details in a moment. Just your, you know, walking shed or transit shed would say, you know, it's, it is another side of the bypass, but it's actually not inconvenient to downtown that you can go underneath the, the bridge there on the Greenway Trail at the two fifty and get over on High Street and get up into town. So there's, it's got some reasonable accessibility. Existing conditions, as we've noted, are basically gravel parking lot, some other parking areas, roads, bamboo, other invasive species, and some junk cars have been there for some period of time. They were there predating the, our client's acquisition of it. And I think they've allowed those folks to kind of keep it there until they find somewhere else for them. I don't know where that stands. Quick graphic of the project history for those who didn't see these before. We started off with on the far left there, a storage-only building, which had a sort of loop around and access onto Bellevue. And there was some concerns about that. And so we adjusted, we moved the building over towards the corner. We then proceeded through that and sort of heard that it really wasn't intense enough, didn't do enough for the street. We then looked at the storage option. The third one is with the pink you'll see there, it's storage with a retail component on River Road. Cause the idea was to have other than storage on the site. That, I think, still was not perceived as, or determined to be intense enough or doing enough for the streetscape as was the sort of matching the city's future plan. So here is the current proposal. And on the right is the apartment building, which is four stories and fifty four units. The special use permit is for one additional floor and nine more units. So it's by right forty-five units and we have nine more in the special use permit, fifty-four. The self-storage building is tucked in the back. One of the challenges here was in various proposals we looked at was some neighbors had concern about, you know, use not being intense enough and others had concerns about traffic being too high. And one of the benefits of the storage use is that fills a commercial use. It's a use convenient, people like to have around them a short distance for storing things. And it's, it's not noisy, again, very limited traffic and it's, that's a good use of that back piece of the property. It's tucked into the hillside, basically two floors. So it's four stories on the apartment building side and two stories on the side facing the residential behind it. Quick elevations, we can go back to any questions, these elevations of the apartment buildings, apartment building. Color rendering of it to give you some idea what the, what it would look like. You'll see there we have the sidewalk and the landscape buffer, the streets at work requirements. This is the storage building. It's elevations, which really you won't see much of except for maybe that north elevation, which would be the views you go up Bellevue. And that will be screened. We have a pretty significant landscape strip between the building and the street. And that's the back. So the, we've, the owner of the adjacent property showed up at one of the site review meetings. We talked a little bit about that. And essentially their, their house effectively sits above the roof of that because the slope is so much on Bellevue. If you've traveled, you know it's very steep. So there didn't seem to be a particular concern about that as in that we'll be planting a, a screening buffer on the back of this as well, between the two properties. There's nothing, you know, new in here, but some highlights of the staff report. And I think that the couple of them that, the ones fourth down, that the mix of uses will improve the quality of site, diversifies the site, better activates the street and establishes uses that are in walking distance. And the thing about this is interesting is we're really, we're kind of going out on a limb a little bit. This is not, if you're a typical real estate developer, you don't look at this site and say, oh, let's do a great, you know, mixed-use development. Let's do an apartment building on this corner. And we were led that way based on the feedback we received from the city. And so that's why we're back here with this particular proposal. And I think the staff report, you know, very clearly outlines a number of ways this is a, a good use of this property. We would make a connection, you know, we would close the connection gap between Bellevue and I guess the tractor supply with the sidewalk, which is something sorely needed right now. We provide via the special use permit conditions, a, a connection to the north on River Road. So curb ramps and things, so people coming that way would be to get across Bellevue safely. And these are things you've seen in the staff report, I'm sure. I'll highlight the bottom one again, that, this is again from the staff report, that it provides a different housing stock in this area of business. And I think that will help kick off more businesses and more similar developments around it, which I think should be a, a goal for all of us if we want to get that vision of a mixed-use corridor there rather than more the car-centric industrial corridor that it is. So that is a rendering there, I'll close with this, of the view from corner of Bellevue and River Road. We have a fifteen hundred square foot sort of community space there for some kind of commercial use. You know, coffee shop or maybe there's, there's an ice cream stand. It's long operated out of the tractor supply, which sort of demonstrates a, you know, a feasibility of that. And maybe that's the use that moves in there. We don't know exactly, we don't have a user for that. But the idea is that would be a commercial space to the public on the corner and then with the residential on the street and then the storage building in the back. So that's the, that's the overview. So there are more questions and I'm happy to answer those as well as if there are particular comments in the public that I haven't seen, I'm happy to respond to those as well.
So, Mr. Shimp, good to see you again.
Yes, good to be here again.
Why are the two, two buildings so architecturally different and, and unrelated?
Well, I, I don't, I've, I can, sorry. I set a timer to make sure I didn't go over.
You're learning.
I am, yes. Nor have I brought you any new information tonight. So, you know, I think there's certainly a difference in, you know, how you build a, a storage building and a residential building, clearly. I don't know what the, I am the, both a builder with the storage building and the developer with the property owner here. Maybe they answered that a little better than I can, but I think that, that they weren't thought of as being, as part of one thing, but rather that screening, storage building was sort of put in the back and meant to be a, a business use that's not invasive to the, you know, the people who are living in front of it, the people living around it. I guess there was not a, I don't know if there really could be a architectural, but so much architectural compatibility just based on the type of use that it is.
I mean, even the materials are different in the two buildings. They're, they're, they're radically different buildings. I was just wondering if there is some rhyme or reason behind that. And I, I noticed on the elevations for the storage building, the, can you, maybe you're not the appropriate one, but the top elevation is incorrect in the, in these drawings. I'm just wondering what it did. I'm trying to get a feel for, on the backside, how much building is above grade. But as you can see, we go from a finished floor slab of three sixty-four, well, I'm sorry, three fifty-three and then at the top it's three seventy-three. It, only twenty feet tall, no.
Yes, you're right. There's a, there's a typo on it. I can tell you it's, it is intended to be two stories tall on the back. So they're about ten-foot floors, so probably twenty feet to the top of the flat roof, twenty-one feet plus a small parapet. plus a small parapet.
So that's probably 391 and 393, I'm guessing. Okay, so about 20, 25, 28 feet, 27 feet on the backside, although the north elevation is not drawn correctly, I think there's, the grade still continues up on the west side of the building. I just, it's too bad there's not an elevation of that entire north side to show the relationship between the apartment building, the storage building, and then the residences behind it, to see how the three of them relate.
The whole street all the way up.
Yeah.
I got you.
I'm wishing we had that.
So I'm going to pull us back in and remind us what our standard of review is, because we're going to get to go your entrance corridor.
Massing and scale.
Massing and scale, okay.
And appropriateness in the context of use, so we have a commercial use, industrial kind of commercial building next to a residential.
Right.
So I figured my questions were.
Perfect.
You're welcome.
Hello, Mr. Schimpf. We have a lot of questions from the public. One quick one, what kind of hours are we talking about for self-storage, given that it will be bracketed by residential uses?
So that came up at several of the neighborhood meetings, and they're generally daytime hours, they don't, they're not open 24 hours, you can only go get your stuff in the window. It's operated something like eight hours a day with a staff person or two, and then you can go a couple hours earlier and a couple hours later to get your items out, but it's not a 24-hour facility.
So if something happens in the middle of the night, I can't go get something out of my storage unit, like all the other storage units around town?
Yeah, and I understand from these operators that that's not the case here. It's not, you know, it's not a, one of these storage where you get your own little metal shed out in the middle of a parking lot. It's a building you have to enter, there's a key fob to get in and out. I think when you rent there, you have to understand that you just don't have 24-hour access to your stuff.
And is this storage building like the ones you have previously presented, where it can only be used for storage? It's a unique, distinctive type of construction that is just for storage buildings?
Yes, I think this is the same, I want to double check on that, but yes, this is, this building is maybe borderline half the size of the prior proposals.
Right.
But yes, this type of construction is still a light-duty framing that you could make it into a server farm or something like that probably, but not necessarily a, maybe an office easily.
Thank you.
It's a perfect place for a server farm.
The, there's been concern about existing truck traffic on Bellevue, and concern that this may be increased truck traffic. Did you consider some kind of traffic calming on Bellevue as part of this?
Well, we are certainly, you know, reworking that entire street, which I think will help that. We've also designed the exit to be a right-out only, so our trucks can't turn up Bellevue. So if you come in to pick up your, something from the storage unit, and you park in the front, and just get back up to that, so anyone from the public can see if they're curious, you'll see that sort of entrance at the top of the page on Bellevue, see how it kind of angles off the right? So that's a right-out only. So trucks could, in theory, come down the very end of Bellevue, only in front of our piece, but they would not be to go up the street to the residential area, they'd have to go out to River Road. That was a, that was a concern we heard from neighbors early on, and I think the staff and the traffic engineer directed us to this sort of solution, to allow circulation but not encourage traffic to go through the neighborhood.
So my question would be, are you going to do some type of, I know you can put some type of something in the road that prevents them from making the left, or is it just going to be signage?
It's a medium, concrete median, so you'd have to drive over top of it, I mean, if you were really trying to, perhaps you could, but it would not be natural or comfortable or something you'd want to do.
There's some public interest in crossing the street. River Road does have some things on the other side that Bellevue residents could be interested in, potential residents of this could be interested in. Did you consider a crosswalk?
Well, we heard that question, and I think the issue with that, I don't want to speak for the city exactly on this, but there's a problem with the mid-block nature of it. There's no, like, where a crosswalk should be, which we've started to build, would be directly across at Bellevue to the other side and down, but the alternative, what was discussed with some of the neighbors, was could we go down to sort of the, let's say, the Tractor Supply side of our site, have a crosswalk there over to the AutoZone side of the site, where you could then walk down the sidewalk that exists. But there's some pedestrian safety issues of a crossing mid-block like that, that traffic engineers generally don't advise. So that's why we didn't do that. We've had the improvements at the Bellevue, and then what's not shown here is that the staff condition requires us to also improve this side here. So folks who are coming down this way, again, it's not good sidewalks, but at least if they get to here, they'll have a safe place to cross, and then they come down this way, and then as these other pieces are redeveloped, this could come across and then down to the Greenway system. So we're creating the start of it, but the, I think the mid-block crossing may create some safety issues that would maybe not be in the public's best interest, at least as I can understand from the traffic folks.
I see in the staff report, there is no affordable housing component of this, nor is one required, but they do suggest that that could make it, it could make sense for this site. Can you speak on that?
Well, yes, I mean, one of the challenges of this sort of site, one thing, just keep in mind, our special use permit is for nine more units, the residential side, right? So it's relatively small addition, and really, why we're doing that is actually just to make it viable to begin with. We've got, we started off, there's a history of this, we started off with a three-story building, and that was the by-right plan, which we submitted, and we got construction pricing back and found that that was just, you know, on the edge of being able to build. So in a way, like, this extra units is to create the residential project in its entirety. So if we start looking at an affordable component on that, you know, the nine, it actually may, might sort of end the feasibility of the project as a whole, ending up with no units, basically. So that's, this is a small project, it's conventional financing, it's not the HUD-type programs that the big 200-unit deals do, it's not VHDA tax, there's no help in making that happen, and with construction cost right now, it's just a, unfortunately, not something that can be worked into every situation.
There's been some concern that this could be, a project could be phased, that self-storage could go in first, and the residential and coffee shop, or retail component may be significantly delayed. Can you speak on that?
So I would have to get the developer to answer this beyond what I know, I'll tell you what I know, and come down and tell me if this is any way different, is that the intention is to have one site planned and to start both at the same time. I met with the, we had actually lunch with the GNC today, the one who wants to build the apartment building. And there's discussion actually of how they're going to coordinate and have the storage built in the same contractor as the apartment building, because they're going to be on top each other during construction. So everything that I've heard, everything I know, is that they would be built simultaneously. I think there would be, you know, the nice thing about the commercial of the storage in the back of the site, is that it's pretty, it's non-impactful for people who live there. And so what we would want to do is build a building, and then have a year of construction going in and around it after folks have moved in. So you build it all at once, and that's, you're happier residents that way. So yeah, the intention is to build it all at once.
That's everything I've got.
Mr. Mitchell, did you get your questions answered?
Yeah, I didn't. Talk a little bit about the runoff and your agreement, do you deal with that?
So we've submitted, again, we've submitted a site plan a number of different times, different ways, and so I think on the by-right site plan we had submitted, we had thought about just buying the due treatment credits, that's allowed in this circumstance. Special use permit, that's sometimes been discussed, and I think the staff looked at that and said, well, in this circumstance, special use permit for two uses, they felt that the requirement to treat on-site was something that should be done, and we've agreed to that, or we agree to that condition, if you impose it on us, we'll have to have on-site water quality treatment with the project, basically. So it may require a little revision of the site plan I've submitted, but nothing that's, it's a, it's an added cost of the construction, but yes, we can, we can treat the stormwater on-site for this project.
So, do you agree that treatment on-site is required under the stormwater regulations?
Well, no, I would say it's not under the storm regulations, but it is under the condition of special use permit proposed by staff. If I were just submitting the site plan for, you know, if we wanted to put a parts warehouse there, or some other by-right use, in theory, we would not have to do on-site treatment under the stormwater regulations, but the city, I think, I don't know if this is wrong, but can impose a condition, the zoning, that would require us to do that, and so that's...
Oh, that would be item number four under page 20.
So under number four, is your proposal now, you're saying that condition number four is acceptable, is your proposal to do all of the quality treatment on-site, or are you still going to do some combination of on-site treatment and off-site credits?
I interpret this as all, maybe that, maybe this, so our intention is to do all. I read this as, whatever the treatment required is for stormwater regulations, we'll do it on-site and not off-site.
That would be good.
Yeah, but we're, we interpret that to be the requirement.
And you're amenable.
We're amenable to that, yes.
Shall we open public comment? Thank you, Mr. Schimpf. At this time, I will welcome public comment. I don't know if we have anybody signed up, no one's signed up for this, but if you would like to speak, please step forward, you can state your name, and you have three minutes
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Morgan Butler, I'm with the Southern Environmental Law Center. You'll be relieved to hear that I can now discard most of my remarks, because the stormwater issue has been brought up. I think the question that Ms. Robertson asked there at the end is key, that's exactly the point we were going to make. When you read the condition as it is drafted in the staff report, it basically, you could make the strong argument that if they simply apply a small bit of on-site stormwater treatment that covers only a small portion of the site, they're still in compliance with that condition. I was very glad to hear the applicant say, we interpret that to require that it, we use, do all of our treatment on-site, but I would strongly encourage that the wording of that condition reflect that intent. In other words, it should be written in a way to make clear that the applicant will provide on-site treatment to satisfy its entire water quality treatment requirement, and that it may not acquire off-site credits to satisfy any part of that requirement. Thank you.
Would you repeat that?
Sure. It should be written in a way to say that the applicant will provide on-site water quality treatment to satisfy its entire water quality treatment requirement, and it may not acquire off-site credits to satisfy any part of that requirement. That would need to be tweaked, but that's the, that's the general idea.
I think...
Hang on one second. I'm going to get some, might close public hearing.
Oogie.
There may be, there may be the other...
I know. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak?
Greetings, greetings. I'm Dave Hirschman at 1107 Calhoun Street, and representative of the Locust Grove Neighborhood Association. And we met with the applicant numerous times over the past, I guess, year, year and a half. The association didn't take a position on development proposals, but just wanted to tell you some of the priorities of our neighborhood association that we've held for many years. One being, just breathe more life into River Road. As you know, it's kind of unremitting industrial corridor, a lot of asphalt down there, so we've been long interested in having more types of land uses along River Road. Our neighborhood is a pedestrian neighborhood, there's people walking all the time for practical reasons, to go to CVS for shopping, and to get down to the river on the Greenway. And so those were things we talked a lot with the developer about, and with Mr. Schimpf about. So providing that streetscape along Bellevue, which is right now not a very pedestrian-friendly area. But we did talk about crossing River Road, because frankly, what we do now is we go down the hill, we get to River Road, and we look right, and we look left, and we scurry to get down to the Ravanna Trail, you know, either in front of Tractor Supply, and people are coming off the bypass, and it's really not a safe situation to get to the stairs that we call Mr. Hooga's stairs, because he was, provided those for us a number of years ago. But as Mr. Schimpf said, that's kind of, we'd love to see that at some point, a more formal crossing of River Road. And finally, we love the river, we have all the trails, not just the Ravanna Greenway right here, but our whole neighborhood is circled by the Ravanna Trail system, which we use a lot, and so the water quality aspect is something we've discussed with the developer, so we're also very supportive of having the on-site water quality treatment. So a few things, just to summarize the discussions we've had, like I said, we don't take a position for or against as a neighborhood association, but to prize you that we've had a lot of discussions, three or four neighborhood meetings with the applicant, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this project? Then I will close the public hearing and open for discussion.
Well, I mean, the point I was going to make is that I think the staff report and the recommendation pretty much articulates exactly what the gentleman said, it's got to be on-site, it's got to be complete, it's got to be best-managed practices and all that stuff, so I think the fervor is there is good.
Discussion or motion?
I'd just like to note that, looking over the four iterations of this project, it has improved, and that's heartening to see.
Absolutely.
Yes. I would like to settle, though, that the project would not be phased, construction, and that the, I'd like to see the same uses that are proposed to actually be there and in the future.
Say it again?
Yeah.
The mixed uses that are being proposed will continue to be there in the same square footage as it is developed.
So I don't know that we can necessarily put a condition on the type of use, but we can definitely do a square footage, so you can say that there...
So it's fine, you have an application for a specific development in front of you. The specific development is for buildings that will be used for specific purposes, and, you know, with specific four square footages associated with those. So your special use permit can be approved for the specific development that's been presented to you.
Okay. Do we need to clarify square footages in that motion?
You can, you could cite, you could choose to cite the document here that's dated, and you could call out the specific criteria in there that you want to make sure are emphasized, and it sounds like the square footage of the individual uses are important.
General square, I mean... And could we ask the developer to come down and speak about the phasing? If any phasing is desired, or do we just simply build that into the motion?
Do the plans that have been submitted to you call for phasing?
Doesn't call for phasing, so we could probably put a condition on that this plan be built in accordance with the site plan and not have, not be phased.
What is the concern over the phasing?
That the stores be built and the apartments never be built. Because I agree with you, I mean, that's what's been all of a sudden now, this has popped up and everything. Could it be a condition? Could it be a condition that if phasing were to happen, that there's a timeline based on that if, if the storage unit is built prior to, in this condition, if the storage built unit is built prior to the apartment buildings, the apartment buildings shall be constructed within one year of a CO of the, I mean, can that be something? Is it... The problem is, there's no, there's no enforcement mechanism. It doesn't matter what would happen.
Could we not require a bonding if that's what you're trying to do?
You have to bond the site plan.
Site plan, okay.
I think that, I think it, given the approval for a, specifically for a mixed-use project, I think it would be reasonable to require that construction of all of it proceed simultaneously without phasing. I think that would be reasonable.
And you all can rely on Section thirty-four, four fifty-eight, which notes that the special permit for density can be allowable in a mixed-use situation.
Project, the construction of the project be done simultaneously without, without phasing? In what code section did you sign?
Thirty-four, four fifty-eight.
Is any of you taking a note to make a motion? Because I don't see any writing. All right.
Joe, you go for it.
Oh, I'm terrible at this.
Oh, you got it.
Yes, you were writing stuff down.
Can I ask the poll stuff real quick? Are you, everybody's good with condition one, two, three, and four with the amendment? Minor amendments, good. So, the next condition would just be to say that the project should be in general accord with the plan?
S P conceptual plan for nine oh one River Road dated twenty-three October two thousand eighteen. And then if you wanted to get specific about including certain elements, which you all...
Including...
With additional...
Square footages.
Okay. I'm gonna write this down.
All right.
So, what I'm hearing is that you, you want to specify that the property will be used only for the uses presented in the development plan that's been given to you.
You want me to crack a crack at it? Don't get too used to this, I know.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I'm just curious.
Thank you. What are your price points for these units?
I don't actually know. Like, they're, they're doing market rate rents. And I mean, this, this part of, you know, the city is not going to be as expensive as a downtown sort of area. I think that's probably part of the construction challenges with doing something this sort of bold, this location as far as doing the financing and all. So, I don't, I don't know the number, but it's, it is market rate. I don't expect it will be anything like what you see around here, but it would be a mid-range sort of price point, I'm sure.
Really, I move to approve. I recommend, I move to recommend approval of SP dash one eight zero 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 one zero. Subject to the four conditions presented in the staff report with the addition of condition four, adding the language, developer will provide onsite water quality treatment to satisfy its entire, I lost the words, treatment of the stormwater onsite. And this may...
Well, you know, I wouldn't modify. I think in number four is fine because it's more specific and it talks about DEQs and talks about best management practices. And it says it must be all done onsite. So, I would just leave number four as it is and just maybe indicate that this will be done in lieu of nutrient credits.
Okay, okay, okay. So, recommend to approve SP eighteen with the four conditions presented in the staff report to include the language in Section four at the end of that condition. And this is to be done in lieu of stormwater credits. And then a second, condition number five, the project should be construction in general accord with S U B conceptual plan nine oh one River Road dated October twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, to include uses and square footages as described. And the condition six, the construction of the project shall be done simultaneously without phasing.
And in compliance with mixed use zoning.
And in compliance with mixed use zoning, code Section thirty-four dash four fifty-eight. I'd like to second that motion. Motion and a second. Thank you for the teamwork there.
Well done.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Creasy, will you call? Roll.
Mr. Leandro?
Aye.
Mr. Soli Yates?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
And Ms. Green?
Aye.
One out of ten ain't bad, Mr. Schimp. One out of ten ain't bad.
Four times the charge.
Four?
It's a great plan.
See you next month.
See you next month.
I'm sure you'll have something. All right, guys. Here we go. Next item on the agenda is CP eighteen dash zero 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 two Emmett Street Streetscape Concept pursuant to Virginia Code Section fifteen point two dash two-two-three-two and City Code Section three-four dash two-eight. The Planning Commission will review the proposed Emmett Street Streetscape Concept located on Emmett Street from the Ivy Road slash University Avenue intersection north on Emmett Street to the Arlington Boulevard intersection to determine if the general location, character, and extent of the proposed improvements are substantially in accord with the city's adopted comprehensive plan or part thereof. Following the joint public hearing, the Planning Commission shall communicate its findings to the Charlottesville City Council with written reasons for its approval or disapproval. The conceptual design of the proposed improvements may be examined at the Neighborhood, Department of Neighborhood Development Services. Advocate, please.
Okay. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm John Stewart. I'm with Clark Nixon. We're the engineering firm hired by the city to develop the design for the project. I'm joined by colleague Mike Callahan with EPR PC, also planning and engineering here in Charlottesville, who's been a key partner in the development of the project. So, what we're gonna do is walk through, really, the project's development over the past year, where we are, and then take a look ahead as to where things are going with the concept development that's in front of the Planning Commission for tonight. The agenda just goes over what we're gonna talk about here, talk about the schedule, what we've done in the development of the concepts with public engagement, and then how it is consistent with the comprehensive plan for the city. This really started, the genesis was with the city applying for the funding for the project. Really, a lot of planning and forethought went into this for the main features that are shown on here. That includes multimodal improvements, bike lanes, pedestrian paths, improving the intersections for ADA access, also some landscaping and making sure that the bus operations with transit will function well on the corridor, which as shown here extends from Ivy Road up to Arlington Boulevard. And really, this is an aerial view of the project, showing the Cavalier Inn at the south bottom of the photo, which is no longer there, but the project, this is the canvas we're working with for the redevelopment. The schedule itself is shown here, and we are really, in the fall of two thousand eighteen, looking at transitioning from the concept design into the detailed design. This does move forward into a final design stage next year, which will set things up for doing the right-of-way acquisition, utility relocations, and ultimately, construction beginning May of two thousand twenty-one. The public engagement process has been built around a steering committee comprised of neighborhood associations, stakeholders, including the University of Virginia, as well as Planning Commission representatives and the businesses for Barracks Road, which owns the property on the north end of the project. And then within that, we've got a project website that we've used to communicate with the public on the status of the project, providing all the information about where the project is in the development stage. And then really, a big part of this has been the public outreach and engagement that's been developed to date. And Mike's gonna talk a little more about that.
Yeah, thanks, John. So, the principal engagement activities have been a pair, actually, three now, steering committee meetings. We also had a community meeting on May twelfth at the old Cav Inn before it was demolished. And we had a meeting with UVA students in September because that May timeframe wasn't really good for them with school ending. So, we've learned a lot through the public engagement. And one thing, this is a funded, smart-scale project, so there is kind of a, you know, some outlines of a scope of what the project entails, such as bike lanes and the things John already went over. But we did get a lot of good input into the design and the planning for the project. Starting out with the community meeting, we asked people about kind of their, how they use the facility, their perceptions. A lot of what we heard affirmed, you know, what the city's already said, its vision for this being a very walkable, bikeable corridor, a key component, especially of the bike network for the city. One of the principal questions in this project is which side of shared use path should go on of the right-of-way. The west side is the John Paul Jones Arena side. The east side is the Lambeth Commons side. And that is, that has been an open question during the public engagement, and the majority of people preferred it on the west side, the arena side. And then we also did a walking tour, which was really useful. You don't realize just how loud it is until you're out there, walking around, trying to talk to people about what they're seeing and observing. Very loud, fast traffic, auto-centric, all things that this project is aiming to address. Student engagement, we, we went to the Lambeth Commons, had some good turnout from students, got good input there as well. They're a little bit more mixed on east side versus west side for the shared use path. But they also talked a lot about the need for better bike ped because they're relying on those modes of transportation. They also really called out and highlighted the Emmett Ivy University intersection and how they feel that's not very safe and it takes a long time to cross. So, these are all things we heard. We also have a website and we have a survey. It is actually still active. And through that, we, we've learned a lot about what people's priorities are as well and kind of the degree of separation and protection they feel a bicycle facility should have. Questions about the shared use path have also, we've gotten more input through the website. Also, probably a few more motor issues in the website, some concerns about congestion, traffic, and signal timing and things like that. And once again, a bit of a preference for a west side shared use path. So, back to John.
So, the, the public engagement has been very helpful in, in looking at what options are available. And this is really comes down to getting these main elements that are required or within the smart-scale application incorporated into the corridor. And this just lists some of them that we took a hard look at in how to best do this. This was built around a multimodal study that was done by our team to assess the traffic operations and just initial ideas of what needed to be done and how to best achieve it. It's broken into really three segments. Showing up here is the Emmett Ivy intersection up to the railroad bridge, which is a constraint we'll talk about here in a minute. And then the second segment is railroad to Massey. Slightly different characteristics on the east and west side of the road. And then north of that is Massey to Arlington, which is again slightly different, but how to best incorporate those improvements. So, with the public input, with the steering committee guidance and then a technical committee, we worked on incorporating those into a preferred concept, which we're, we're presenting to the Planning Commission tonight. And that's really how to best incorporate the multimodal improvements, including the bike lanes, the shared use path, transit, and to make sure that we're also moving cars so that we're not worsening the, the existing condition. This is a typical section showing really the main elements of what we're working to incorporate. It's the three travel lanes. These are reduced lane widths, including eleven-foot outside lanes, ten-foot southbound turn lane. And by the way, this is, if you're looking northbound from Ivy, north on Emmett. Within this, this shows a bike lane, which in this, at this location, has to be on-street. And we'll see that change here when we move to the north. And you see the shared use path on the, what is the west side and a seven-foot sidewalk on the east side. Moving northward, we get up to the railroad. The railroad underpass is a constraint. It's a forty-foot width underneath that we have to fit these lanes and the bike lanes in. So, what you see is we're reducing the bike lanes down to four feet to get them to the other side of the bridge facing north. We aren't doing any improvements to the bridge itself or the sidewalk. It's really from, really curb to curb is where we would be reconfiguring the roadway. North of the railroad is where things change to a, what's called a raised bike lane. It'll transition from on-street up to a raised bike lane. And this was based on input from citizens and biking community of having the higher, somewhat separated configuration was actually deemed preferable. It's also called a cycle track in some locations as well. But you'll see within this, the shared use path on the west side, the travel lanes for the vehicles, and then on the east side, the six-and-a-half-foot raised bike lane, a greenway and a sidewalk. North of Massey to Arlington, that's where the existing median, this is essentially a curbs, existing curb outward improvement that we'd be doing. Eleven-foot travel lanes, again, with a six-and-a-half-foot raised bike lane on both sides and a ten-foot shared use path on both sides. Plan view of the improvements are shown here on this roll sheet. And then this, this is the segment at the beginning from Ivy up to the railroad. And what's important to show here is the tunnel location has yet to be determined. Our goal is to have it as close to the road as possible. We're in the midst of getting ready to engage in geotechnical investigation, which is gonna be very important in determining how close we can get it. And it's also subject to the railroad approving what we want, our design that meets their requirements and not impacting their facilities. That's a close-up of this. Again, just please note that that location is yet to be determined. The closer to the road, the better, which gives you a much more straight-line shared use path. And that would be what we're gonna be working on. And then the plan view going north of that, this shows railroad up to Massey, Massey up to Arlington. Really, the shared use path tunnel, which I just talked about, again, is to get a tunnel underneath the bridge. This is a rough concept of what it could look like. And hitting the ten minutes, this is just a picture of what's been used at another location. Not that this is exactly what we would be doing here. Ours is gonna be certainly treated differently. And really, all in all, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan in keeping with the bike and ped master plan, the city's bikeway facilities. And as a critical link for incorporating multimodal, multimodal improvements, it's all gonna work for the city. And this shows some of the next steps going forward after this meeting. With that, we can answer any questions.
Is that pretty much the same thing we saw in a work session? Was there any changes from that work session?
There, there was a change where I think there was a concern about, we had shown the tunnel location. The blue, if you look at the screen, the blue tunnel location was in what we looked at during the work session. That location is not final, as I said earlier. So, we modified that to show the closer location, which is our goal. So, we modified that to show the closer location, which is our goal, but it is subject to a more detailed engineering, geotechnical information that we need to obtain. We're working on possibly this month or next month to get that. So, that was a change with a note as well.
When do we want to get this done? When do we want to begin? When do we want to finish?
Construction?
Yeah.
Per the schedule, our goal is, this, by this summer, we will have all of, more of the engineering details worked out, where we have a better, more certainty of what's going to be required for the tunnel. The goal right now is to start construction in May of 2021. Construction could take 18 to 24 months, but that right now, May 2021, is our goal to get started.
And have you ever worked with the railroad?
Yes, sir. And so far, I think we've had a good working relationship with them in terms of communicating with them, the goal of the project and the preliminary design, and I think so far, it's gone very well.
You've done this before with other railroads?
An exact, exact tunnel situation like this?
Or a bridge even, or any going over or under?
Done, I've done other work with the railroads, and this one is just really, you can look at it of putting a pipeline underneath the railroad, except this one is going to have people and it's going to be very large. So, I think it's just really staying within their requirements is really what we're going to be doing, and demonstrating to them that we're not going to be damaging their facility. And that, as the owner of the facility, they've got concerns that what we do will not impact what they own in their operations.
Yeah, frankly, I think that'll be the most difficult thing you've got to do, is negotiate with a railroad.
So far, so good. And I think we want to continue that good working relationship we've had with them to get to this point. But, it is something we definitely want to ensure we manage carefully.
Any more questions?
Hello?
Yes.
Got a few for you. Did you consider removing some left turns onto Emmett? There may be some that are not very popular. I haven't looked at the numbers.
The southbound movement is, I guess, with the close-up here, left turns, removing the left turns here, southbound or northbound, that would, the traffic engineering study that was done really is meant to accommodate all the movements. And right now, this proposed layout functions well. It functions within the parameters that are necessary to not be a logjam during the peak hour. Removing a left turn would probably significantly reduce the effectiveness at the intersection.
Not at the intersections, I'm sorry. Adjacent uses to Emmett, there is vehicular access from those uses onto Emmett. There are right turns and left turns, is my understanding. Would you agree?
I'm not sure I understand your question. You're saying access from people on the west side or east side of Emmett?
Yes, exactly. Say from a parking lot.
The university, we've coordinated, we've worked to coordinate with the university, as I think was shown there that we've had, or at least in the notes, we've had meetings with them on their development plan. Really, our understanding right now, based on this plan that's shown, this is their current proposed development plan, which is, I think, subject to change. If I can point out, really, there are no acts, the only access point is on the right, towards the right, next to the tunnel, and that is meant to be a service entrance for what is supposed to be a performance hall, performance building of some kind. My understanding, I need to think offhand here, was that meant to be a right-in, right-out only, or also to provide left turn for the service entrance?
Yeah, I believe so. And there's also further north, the Afghan kebab.
Yes.
Property, which has access at a signal to Emmett Street.
They'll have, that entrance will be maintained, but it will, it will only be right-in, right-out, but they'll also have access to the, to the signalized intersection.
Did you consider removing access to the signalized intersection?
At Massey?
Yes.
Closing that entrance too.
Correct.
I believe we did look at it, but I think the concern would be in restricting access. I think the property owner, we'd have to engage with them if that would be acceptable or not.
Agreed.
So, I don't remember specifically, but I can get back to the city. I think, in the overall plan, if there's an agreement by the property owner to close that access off, it could be easily done. But, right now, that entrance doesn't impose any, anything unusual on the project that would be a difficulty. So, open or closed, I don't, we don't see it as, I don't think it would be a problem. Do you have any other things to add?
No, I do recall, at a steering committee meeting, I think it was an expression of interest in maintaining that access point for that property, so.
I just remember, exactly.
But, it's, yeah, we considered it. There's actually currently two access points prior to the intersection, so that's showing now one access point.
Not having entrance, I think, would be good from a traffic perspective, for traffic flows. Access management wouldn't be a bad idea if the property owner would be amenable to it. But, at this conceptual level stage, we're showing it as remaining open, but we could, I think, easily change it in the final design to remove it, would be an option to consider.
At that intersection, I'm sorry, is that the only thing that serves? Is that additional, or does it serve additional, another property?
It's really the Afghan kebab location, yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but before, on that same property or where that outlet is, it used to be a hotel, correct, the Connaught Lodge?
Yes.
So, in the event that that property is redeveloped, you're going to need some type of other access out, and to also make a left-hand turn. So, to close that at the light, to me, would not be advantageous.
Oh, yeah. We wouldn't want to close it at the light, but I meant the other entrance.
Further down, to the left?
Yeah, just above the building, yeah.
Well, I was under the impression that he was saying clo, were you asking to close it at the light?
No, just.
Whatever makes sense, I support.
Okay.
If it doesn't, doesn't make sense, I'm against it.
All right, okay.
The, I appreciate the speed control that you're proposing here. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
I've spent quite a bit of time on this road. It is noisy, it is, it feels unsafe. Is it possible to do a consistent design of 25 miles per hour?
For the entire corridor?
Correct.
I think that'd be more challenging on the, on the north end here, where there'd be, it'd be harder to make a justification for reduced, for reducing the speed further. I think we'd have to study that with the city. It's something that could be explored and done if the city deemed it to be a priority, but I don't think our traffic engineering analysis has indicated an urgency or a need to do that. Again, I'll defer, from the traffic engineering perspective, of reducing to 25 in this section.
Yeah. We, the recommendation was 25 south of Massey. And, you know, we, we based that recommendation on data on injury and fatality rates for pedestrians and bicyclists, vulnerable road users, you know, based on traffic speeds, which dramatically increase beyond, between 25 and 45. So, definitely 25 south of Massey. We've been recommending 35 between Massey and Arlington. It's kind of a straight-shot stretch. We did do a speed study. There was, there was actually surprisingly not much speeding going on, in large part probably because it's pretty congested for a lot of the day, you know, other than like 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM, a couple of outliers that were going pretty fast. Most people are sticking to around the speed limit.
Brian Duncan, City Traffic Engineer. The other issue is normally you don't want a jump of like 20 miles an hour, so, north of this intersection is 45, so, having 45 to 35 to 25 gives that kind of transition zone, so I just wanted to note that as well.
Thank you.
One more. There's a discussion at the MPO, I believe, of the express bus service from UVA to the airport. Very exciting. Would this work well with that plan?
We've, we've done coordination with CAT and UTS on, I should have pointed out earlier that the proposed bus stop locations are going to be on the north side of Goodwin Bridge. I think that's a question to ask the operators. We did get very constructive feedback from them on locating those bus stops, so that was helpful. But, ultimately, if this helps them operate better, I couldn't answer that question directly, so that would be a question to ask CAT or UTS. But, I think they're, they were definitely instrumental in helping us determine where to best locate these bus stops. So, if that works for the, for the operators, then hopefully it would work well with that, but I can't address it specifically. Have to ask them.
One other thing to that point, in coordinating with UTS, they mentioned going to articulated buses in the somewhat near future, so it's be longer 60-foot buses. And so, you know, an express service might use a bigger vehicle, so, that has been considered as the design Clark Nixon's come up with here. But, I'm familiar with those plans from the Places 29, basically some kind of bus transit concept at least, that was, that was included in that plan running down 29 and coming into this portion of the corridor.
Thank you.
And with the discussion we had at work session two, just to encourage you to intentionally facilitate, coordinate with UVA students' transportation, make sure that that is kind of well-publicized, if not even promoted. Because I, I think communicating with students is a challenge, but I'd encourage you to put effort over the next, over the development time to make sure that there's engagement with the, with the university, especially over the transportation.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We have got to have a public hearing.
And I have a few questions. So, the comprehensive plan calls for a safe multimodal transportation, and my questions have to do with safety. Shared-use path, has there been decisions on what's going to be allowed on the shared-use path?
Shared-use path is, there's really no defined restriction. It's, it's a wide path for pedestrians or bicyclists, but it's for bicyclists that's intended to be lower skilled, or those that are less experienced on riding either on-street bike lane or in a dedicated bike facility. So, lower skill level, whereas the more experienced bicyclist would be using the bike lane. There really is no strict guidance of who can or cannot use the shared-use path.
Well, the Virginia.
I think non-motorized vehicles is, would be a motorcycle or a motorized scooter of some kind.
Well, that's, and that's my question, because the Virginia State Code allows the locality to limit those things used on a shared-use path, such as skateboards, roller skates, electric scooters, electric skateboards. Has there, so has there been the discussion of what, what will be and will not be allowed?
We have not, we have not engaged in that. I think really, at this point, it's been the concept of the basic type of facility configuration to be proposed. The specific use has not been discussed within our study at this point.
My second question, so, can you go to the blow-up of the tunnel? And so, this shows the blue tunnel being 45 feet off of the face of the retaining wall for the bridge. And now, could you go to the typical section, Emmett Street, our underpass? And I'm visualizing a, a 45 feet from the face of that retaining wall to the left, going through that incredible hill, and that is going to be, I mean, I'm seeing it as a, I'm asking you for confirmation. What do you see happening? Is this going to be a channel that is then going to a tunnel, having a sharp turn through a tunnel, then another sharp turn out? And we've got bicyclists and pedestrians going through that tunnel? And, isn't there, isn't that a dangerous situation?
It's not ideal, that, that amount of curvature coming from the shared-use path locations to get to the tunnel. It's less than ideal. It's, but it would be signed and marked so that the user would be aware and see what they're having to engage. That is a preliminary layout, it's conceptual, so, could the curve be smoothed out a little more? Possibly, that, that would be an option that we could, we could possibly work on if the blue, if the farthest offset location is what we end up having to do. Our goal is, with the geotechnical information that we obtained, is to see, we need to know the conditions of that fill, the railroad fill, so that we know what we can realistically design and construct to get it closer to the road. So, but in the worst-case condition, it is less than ideal.
Is it dangerous?
That would be, you'd have to say, danger would be a tough way to define. With appropriate signing and warning to people to not travel through it at a high speed, I think it could be mitigated to a, to a minimum level of concern, so that it would not be dangerous. People will just have to slow down a little more than they would if it was in the location closer to the road. So, danger, if bicyclist or pedestrian, or lower, lower speed, typically low-speed bicyclist, it shouldn't be dangerous, and we just have to really do everything to warn and mitigate any, any risk for that.
Now, could you go to the, I think, the composite plan, I'm sorry, this overall concept?
Yeah, the very.
Or the concept option, I'm sorry.
The first one really just shows the entirety of the project.
Yeah.
From Ivy on the left to Arlington on the right.
And the way you have it cut up, it's hard to see unless you, what I'm going to ask about. So, on the, the bottom east side of Emmett, starting at Arlington, all the way to the right, to then Massey Road, there is a shared-use path on the east side, and yet, and then, it stops at Massey, and then there's a seven-foot sidewalk that picks up there. So, what is the, why? I mean, it's, it's not collecting from, it's not connected to a shared-use path on the, to the north, and, and yet, now that's, that's a seven-foot sidewalk. So, you're taking a shared-use path and then dumping it into a sidewalk that should only have pedestrians on it.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to this. Well, first of all, originally, we were thinking the shared-use path would just be on the west side, and it would be just sidewalk and raised bike lane on the east side. This is, in the city's bike ped master plan, a arterial trail corridor, that's the vision, and that extends all the way up Emmett Street to at least Barracks Road, if not beyond, and I think tying into the, into the path there along Meadow Creek. So, part of the thinking here was that the shared-use path would continue up the east side of Emmett in the future, beyond the scope of this project, as part of some future project. And so, not wanting to kind of preclude that opportunity, including it on both sides north of Arlington. Shared-use path kind of has to have a logical termination point, intersection's a good one. South of Massey, it transitions not just to a sidewalk, but a raised bike lane and a sidewalk. And so, you know, designing that transition well, to your point, is really important, but that is, that's where the, that transition takes place. You know, we can't, cannot do a tunnel through, on both sides of the railroad, both sides of Emmett, through the railroad embankment, and so continuing it south of Massey, it would, it would just end probably at that.
But, I'm seeing those same less-skilled bicyclists that was mentioned before using a shared-use path instead of the bike lane on the road, being dumped at an intersection and either going straight ahead. and either going straight ahead and using a pedestrian sidewalk, or being told to cross a 60-foot wide road.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, it's a signalized intersection, which will have crosswalk markings, crosswalk signalization, and I think we would expect, we'll put in some signing to say, bicyclist or shared use path users, use, cross the road and go to the west, go to the west side, so that they can use the path that'll be underneath the railroad.
Okay.
So I think there's some design elements that will need to be incorporated, and that's certainly a valid question to have at this stage as to what the user would do. But I think some appropriate signing and awareness that we want to advise the users would hopefully, you know, mitigate any concern or question that they would have about the use of the, the shared use path.
Would there be an, an option of just not doing a shared use path, but a seven-foot wide sidewalk? And in the future, when you have the capability of extending that shared use path of, of then converting it to a shared use?
That certainly something that could be considered. Yeah, I think you could design it, or at least do the right-of-way acquisition, or plan for a future 10-foot, and in the interim do a reduced width to a seven-foot. That's, that would certainly be an option that could be considered-
Okay.
...as a part of the final design.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm thinking-
Go ahead.
Thinking also about this pinch at the bridge. I see that you're diverting some of the bicycle traffic into the tunnel, which I love, that seems really safe and good, but you're still keeping the southbound bike lane through the tunnel, which is very expensive real estate. Did you consider just diverting all bicycle traffic through the tunnel and then back onto the street?
We did, it's essentially providing an option, or again, for a cyclist on a dedicated bike lane to be able to continue south on the dedicated bike lane was really the thought process. It's less than ideal, we'd like to have a wider bike lane there, but I think it's just trying to make the best out of, you know, what we've got in front of us. So it's competing demands, but if a bicyclist isn't comfortable continuing on, they'll have the option of, of going into the tunnel. So I think it's a matter of just trying to best meet the needs of the project with what we've got to work with. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, I, I understand the, sort of, the thinking here. Did you consider just-
Diverting all bike traffic to the tunnel?
And then widening the northbound?
That would really present a mix of the users, I think, of the bicyclist, so a more experienced bicyclist would then be put into the less experienced lane, if you will, with the shared use path, which would not be ideal. Is there any other thing you'd want to add?
Yeah, I think, I agree with John said, you know, one thing that's been discussed a lot throughout this project is, you know, why a shared use path and a bike lane? And, you know, that, we see it as there's two different types of user out there. There's commuters, fast speed, people you already see out there riding bikes, and a shared use path is mixed, pedestrians, it's slower-speed bicyclists, children. And so, you know, allowing those faster speed, more commuter, more experienced bicyclists to stay on the street is why it is presented in this way. Also, you know, one thing to keep in mind, there is a lot of foot traffic before and after games at John Paul Jones Arena. In fact, we counted almost a thousand an hour. And so, you know, diverting bikes through that tunnel before, after a UVA game could be an issue as well.
Thank you.
I think that if it's not there, those experienced bikers are going to just use the road anyway, so I've seen a lot of bikers through there. Any more questions before we go to public hearing?
I'll just chime in. I think most of what I would probably have said has been, you know, questions have been asked about the shared use path on the east side going from seven feet to 10 feet, and then the kind of conversation around the tunnel. So, you know, I think generally we've been, at UVA, we've been collaborating with you guys on the project team on this, and I guess our still kind of outstanding concerns are the, the idea of the right-of-way being take, you know, being that we're going to give up for a lot of this, especially on that site, I guess, on the southwest of the train trestle. Yeah, exactly. So we do have, you know, development plans for that, and any, you know, any, any amount that is coming out of our property for the right-of-way is, you know, affects our development plans.
I'm going to hang on. Are you going to ask him a question? Because I'm going to have, we're going to do our comments after our public hearing.
Gotcha. So the question, well, I think my question was Lyle's question about the diversion of the bike traffic-
Okay.
...to the shared use path, and whether that four-foot bike lane going south was necessary. So, and I think that was answered, so I'll wait.
Okay. And then we, definitely we're going to have discussion after a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Okay, thank you so very much. And at this time, we'll open the public hearing, so I think we have at least one person signed up. Let me guess, Mr. Krebs, come on up. Same rules.
Hey, Peter Krebs, Piedmont Environmental Council. I won't take a lot of time, it seems like everybody appreciates how critical this is, really right in the middle of city, county, and university. I mean, this is really, really pretty great. One of the things that we're super excited about is that it has this fully-protected semi-raised bike lane and a shared use path. I think that, that's a great combination. And thinking about how the shared use path is, I, I think the user that you're thinking of is somebody that wants to be relaxed, period. Whether they're pushing a stroller, or they're riding a bike real slow, or they're, they want to walk with three people all holding hands, whatever reason it is. And then the bike lane is for a velocity cyclist, and yes, it's true, it's best to not be ambiguous about that stuff. I had a tiny piece of added data to share, which is that as we speak, VDOT is going through and setting up guidelines for motorized vehicles. And it's not just scooters and, and e-bikes, although those are complicated. You also have to think about motorized wheelchairs, and the specifications they're coming up with are, which I think is right, rather than thinking about trying to define who a user is, they're thinking about the performance and specs of the vehicle itself, so maximum speed, maximum weight. Those, those are the things. And having vehicles whose performance is appropriate to mix with pedestrians, being the ones that are allowed to mix with pedestrians. So obviously a wheelchair, motorized wheelchair, that's going to be mixed with pedestrians. A bike that is capable of going over 20 with assistance probably wouldn't be allowed. But I, I'm not from VDOT, and that's just something I overheard. So yeah, this is exciting, and thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this?
Hello. Hi, Kathleen Adams, I'm a citizen of Charlottesville, I live in Fifeville. I, I'm always excited about these projects. I do think this one seems to have still a very vehicular focus when, in the design. It's interesting to hear about the transition of speeds, but it is also, as they said, very important to realize the change of speed between 25 and 45 is like a massive increase in danger of death to pedestrians, and so very important to consider. Also, the travel lanes are 11 feet. The sort of rule for the streets that work is 10 to 11 in mixed-use areas, so it seems like maybe a foot could be taken away from a travel lane and put into a bike lane for a little extra space, especially since Charlottesville people have a tendency to drive into bike And I think also just remembering at the signalized intersections to actually give time to pedestrians and prioritize that in the way that we design these things, because I don't think that's prioritized in many places in Charlottesville. Like, there should be more than four seconds left when I cross the street, because I'm a very able-bodied person, there need to be probably 30 seconds left. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Anyone else here like to speak to this project? And I will close the public hearing and open this for discussion. Is signalization a part of this?
Yes.
Great.
Who signals?
Specifically for pedestrians?
Part of the signal design is to provide pedestrian a lead time for them to start crossing before a car is given a green light.
Okay.
Leading pedestrian interval.
Okay, okay.
Gives, gives a pedestrian a little bit of a head start over the vehicle, so that's what's going to be built into all of the intersection designs.
Thank you.
Would it be possible to ask Mr. Duncan another question?
Sure.
Thank you.
And then?
Oh, sure, well, you're welcome. The, I appreciate your clarification about why the 35 miles per hour, that's, that's helpful to understand. I worry that we've got a tail wagging the dog issue. I, I spent some time on Emmett, I've, I've seen the UVA employees rabbit across the 45 mile per hour street trying to get their tacos. Is it possible that we could just have the, the dog wag the tail? Could we make this right and slow down that?
You're essentially making the whole corridor 25 miles an hour?
Make the whole thing safe.
Well, it's, it's a four-lane divided roadway. It's designed that way, you know, if we were to extend the design elements all the way up, which we don't have the scope or the funding to do, then maybe that could be done. But just imposing a 25 mile per hour speed limit without the other restrictions that are going on with this project, you're just going to create an instance where drivers feel no natural inclination to slow their speed. So you're, you're creating a speed trap, which you, you don't generally tend to do or want to do. So this was already kind of a normal traffic study, you're looking at the 85th percentile of speed as far as, you know, where you set that speed. We're changing some of the design elements here, so we're not necessarily following that, but to just go beyond the scope of this project where we're not changing that and lower the speeds, I don't think is appropriate.
How much would it cost to just bump that 35 mile per hour up a block? Ballparked?
The, the design of it?
Yes.
To, to take it from Arlington to the light, I think it's called Wise, maybe? I, I don't know.
Going cheap.
On the side of my head. You know, I, I have, I have no clue. I'd have to go and do some analysis of it.
Are you spoke, are you speaking only about doing that way and not this way? Towards JPA?
Oh, oh, I don't know. How do you mean?
It's, it's already 25 there.
Yeah, it's already 25 at the university.
Oh, that doesn't make sense, just keep going. That'll be a recommendation, there you go.
That, that's my thing. Thank you.
Could I ask you a question too? I'm sorry. What do you think about the suggestion of narrowing the lanes a foot? Would that help slow down traffic?
So the, the, why there 11-foot lanes is the transit? So we have that, it's, it's within all of the streets that work, anywhere where we have transit lines, the, it's 11 feet. The 10 feet is only for turn lanes and for local neighborhood streets. So any of the, you know, roads that we're doing that have transit lines on them are, have 11-foot lanes.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I would think tractor-trailer trucks and delivery trucks and things like that-
Appreciate that, yeah.
Probably.
Yeah.
Cement trucks.
Cement. Any other discussion or motion?
Sure, I'll just get out there what I was going to say, which was-
Sorry about that.
No, no problem, just that that section that's up is, is, you know, really important to our future development at the university, and we're planning for that, and we're just continuing to see what the impact of the right-of-way need from UVA is for that, in terms of what it does to our future programming for that site, and things like fire access and safety access and stuff. So it's really nothing beyond that to say we continue to collaborate with them.
They're not excited about the streets that work and being part of a pedestrian?
That's not, we're excited a lot about it, but, you know, we do have concerns that what started as, you know, let's say a 10-foot right-of-way is now need from UVA, is now a 26-foot right-of-way need from UVA. So, you know, we're just looking at the impacts of that and how what we were originally planning for is impacted by that. So, that's all.
Do any of the other commissioners share my concerns about like the shared path, shared use path on the east side of Emmett between Massey and Arlington?
I do share concern, but you're, they're at UVA, and I think the students are going to do what they want to do anyway, because they're going to be on that side, they're going to Lambeth, and part of me says as much as we can, make that thing as wide as possible to move what can be moved there. I say this because I lived at Wortland for a year. The students are going to do what they want to do. I do share that concern.
But I would also say that technology, there'll be segways and motorized, all kinds of things that we can't even imagine, so.
So taking them from a 10-foot shared use to a seven-foot sidewalk, no, I just see a, a, that was, that's mine, and this is a democracy, so I just wanted to see if it was shared by others.
I've been thinking about that too. That was one other thought I had about resolving the tunnel, it would be to actually just not do bike lanes in the, in the, or no, sorry, not in the tunnel, in the, under the bridge, and just do shared, shared use paths on both sides consistently, and then resume the bike lanes on either side of the, the bridge. What do you think of that thought?
Shared use where the bike lane is now?
Yes.
I don't think it works under the bridge.
You have the regular bicyclists barreling down the road, and then people stepping out into their lane, yeah.
The bridge also has some pilings between the sidewalk and where the bike lane could be, so there's not real-
That could be exciting.
Obvious way to do that.
In general, I'm, I'm more concerned about the, the casual travelers, the, the people who would otherwise feel unsafe. The Spandex folks know what they're doing, is my sense.
I love it that you have a term, Spandex folk. Peter, I think you're into Spandex folk crowd.
No, no. Not when I'm riding a bike.
Two minutes, here am I.
All right.
I think I have a motion.
Oh, great.
I move that the proposed concept for the Emmett Streetscape project located on Emmett Street from the Ivy Road University Avenue intersection, north on Emmett Street to the Arlington Boulevard intersection in the city of Charlottesville, general character, location, and extent of the proposed improvements are substantially in accord with the city's adopted 2013 Comprehensive Plan or part thereof with the recommendation that it be designed with consistent 25 mile per hour speed.
I second.
Can you repeat that? Your last part, just about the speed?
With the recommendation that it be designed for consistent 25 mile per hour speed.
And we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I have a little hesitation or reservation about the consistent 25 mile per hour speed.
You're going to have to pull off the gas.
It is not just me, I don't even go that way, it's too much congestion, but, um-
Nobody goes there.
I just feel like if we've already heard from the traffic engineer that by, is, is not- not just putting up a sign that's saying reduce your speed to twenty-five, it's like a whole nother project, and we already know we're capped in the CIP with funding, um, that's just my, I mean, it's not the end of the world, but I do have a concern about that.
So, it's designed at thirty-five from Mat, Arlington to the past JPA, or to the J, to JPA, is that what I'm hearing?
From what I heard, it gradually, it...
It's twenty, currently it's twenty-five, it switches at the intersection.
Get your steps in.
Thanks, boss.
So, the motion is, though, that we recommend consideration of a twenty-five all throughout the project.
Yes.
Now, that's, that's a recommendation.
Currently, it's twenty, twenty-five south of Ivy, that's what it currently is, and it's thirty-five from Ivy all the way up to Arlington, I believe. So, and then it transitions to forty-five there. So, we're, we're already pushing the twenty-five from Ivy up to Massey, leaving the shorter thirty-five mile an hour from Massey to Arlington, and then...
So, the motion asks that you consider extending the twenty-five, and if, and if traffic study comes back says, you know, staff doesn't recommend that motion, that can still...
Well, that, what you're saying does that, but the motion was design it for twenty-five, which is a little bit different than that, what you just noted.
That is correct. And you seconded it.
Yeah, the, the motion was added, added the clause at the end of the standard motion here and to design it for twenty-five miles per hour.
The whole length.
Right.
And what you noted provided a little more flexibility.
Well, then, we were making a recommendation, right? Then the traffic study will have to take that.
Well, and you, actually, your, you all's point of order tonight is denoting compliance with the Comprehensive Plan.
That's right.
So, you don't really need to get into the speeds necessarily, but if you want to recommend that they look at that as part of the work that they're doing, I don't see any problem with that.
I mean, the consultant has looked at it, we, I mean, we've, we've done the speed study, we did the online survey, and, and the public at large that, you know, weighed in on the survey really had no inclination to reduce the speed in that section either. You know, they, they were looking for the thirty-five and felt that that was appropriate as well, so, that's just, I guess, where we're at, but...
So, we have a motion in a second. In order to change that, we'll need to vote first, see where we are with that. So, the motion is for compliance with the comp plan, twenty thirteen comp plan.
Right, so, Mr. Shollighates read this...
Right.
And then noted that the design be...
Recommended.
Recommended, yeah, right, okay. So, that's where we are. Are we understanding where we are? Ms. Chrissy, will you call roll?
All right, Mr. LaHondra?
No.
Mr. Shollighates?
Yes.
Ms. Dow?
No.
Mr. Heaton?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
And Ms. Green?
Yes.
It's a tie.
So, we have a three-three tie.
Oh, great.
What are we doing at this point?
Try another motion.
Try another motion. Lord of mercy.
What language would be, work better, if I may ask?
Just take the twenty-five mile per hour.
It seems as though what we're talking about is, is questioning the assumption that what currently is has got to continue to be, instead of visioning into the future that, that this might be a slower egress, a slower traffic pattern. So, how do you, how do you put that in the form of motion for the engineers and for the designers to consider that?
Well, first off, we start back with the original motion that says this is in compliance with the comp plan, general character and location extent improvements with the comp plan. But we'd like to recommend, make a recommendation to send to council...
How about...
That more...
That consideration be made of slowing down the corridor.
Be given to extending, more consideration be given to extending the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit to, throughout the project.
Well, if, if we don't specify a speed limit, but merely, merely say, consider, consider that this may be a slower corridor than it has been in the past.
Do you know how much, how, how many people are, I mean, I'm sure you do, I was about to ask a rhetorical question, but I just feel like y'all want to slow this down to twenty-five all the way through, traffic is never gonna make it.
It's not going five miles an hour anyway when it's packed.
Well, that's the whole point, so you want us to go slower. Not only that, the traffic engineer just said it's going to take, it's not just, I could see if it was just about putting a sign up that said, okay, this is no longer thirty-five or forty-five, it's twenty-five all the way through, it's not just putting a sign, there are more dollars and funds that are gonna have to go into reworking this, other than just putting a sign up.
So, may I just weigh in on a second?
Please.
One thing that people often aren't aware of is that in order to change the speed limit on a city street, that's, the speed limit you want to change to has to be supported by scientifically calculated engineering data, has to be an engineering review and report, and they have very specific things that they look at, and so, one thing you might consider, instead of wrestling with what your own thoughts about what the speed ought to be, is simply stating that at a certain point in time, a review of the basis for the speed limit be undertaken, and that based on the engineering assessment, you know, if, if it turns out at some point in the future that there is engine, an engineering justification for a different speed limit, that that, that would be implemented.
Implementing, implemented or considered.
Yes, but it's legally not permissible to establish a different, different speed limit unless and until it's supported by the engineering studies.
And as of right now, our engineering study does not support that, correct?
That's right.
Thank you.
Could, could not, the consideration, it's not just engineering, if a school were put in there, then that would, that would change it without engineering, which because...
Well, what happens is state law establishes certain standard speed limits, so there's a standard speed limit that you have to have in a school zone. To further lower that from what the state specifies, you gotta have an engineering study.
Right.
If you wanted to increase it, you'd have to have an engineering study, so, we can't just assume that because certain uses are there, that, that a layperson can do that, there's legal requirements for the process you have to go through to establish a speed limit that's different than the, sort of, what I'll call the default limits that are established by state law.
So, are we still hung up on the speed?
I think Lyle's gonna make a motion.
Actually, I have a question.
Okay.
What is the average vehicular speed during the morning peak during, through this corridor? Is it twenty-five, thirty-five, forty-five? Average?
We have something in our reference in the multimodal study, I don't have that at hand, twenty-five to eighty-five percentile of where we, I'm trying to figure where we were.
Yeah, we, we can get that for you, I, we don't have it off top of our heads, but we do have it.
Thought you might.
Okay, there's another term, street calming measures?
It wouldn't apply, traffic calming wouldn't apply on this road classification.
But that, I think that that's, that's what I'm hearing Lyle say, that maybe part of the way we can serve the city is to consider that this corridor would not always be the divided highway it was forty years ago.
Well, I think as it evolves and as this project is in play, it can be evaluated once it's been in place for a period of time, and if that is where the numbers land, then a consideration can be made then.
So, I'm gonna write, kind of give you a reminder where we are. The commission shall communicate its findings to the city council with written reasons for approval or disapproval. So, by saying, we, this, this is in accord, I think we can still just give...
It is in accord.
...general concerns that, that some members on, on the commission had general concerns about potentially lowering speed at...
Recommend with concerns instead of recommendations?
Well, I mean, yes, I don't know that we can necessarily recommend, recommend... Recommend recommendations?
So, you, you all are being asked to, to provide compliance with the Comprehensive Plan. If there are additional comments that you all would like to share, then those can be placed with this as well.
I believe I have a motion.
Okay.
Well, it was already voted, is he giving a new mo, or are you giving a...
A new motion.
Okay, sorry.
I move that the proposed concept for the Emmett Streetscape project located on Emmett Street from the Ivy Road University Avenue intersection, north on Emmett Street to the Arlington Boulevard intersection in the city of Charlottesville, general character, location, and extent of the proposed improvements are substantially in accord with the city's adopted 2013 Comprehensive Plan or part thereof, with a concern that more consideration be given to extending the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit through, throughout the project. I changed a word.
A motion to have a second.
You had to put a number in it, didn't you?
Motion in a second. So, I have no second.
I need a piece of paper, I'd like to make a motion, but I closed my computer. Thank you. I don't need a pen. Um, that's not on here. I move that the proposed concept for the Emmett Streets, Emmett Streetscape project located on Emmett Street from the Ivy Road University Avenue intersection, north on Emmett Street to the Arlington Boulevard intersection in the city of Charlottesville, general, general character, location, and extent of the proposed improvements are substantially in accord with the city's adopted 2013 Comprehensive Plan or part thereof.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I will not be supporting this because of the safety concerns I have.
Okay. I'm gonna come back to you on that in a second. So, I have a motion, a second, Ms. Chrissy, will you call roll?
Mr. LaHondra?
No.
Mr. Shollighates?
Yes.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
And Ms. Green?
Yes. I would say that if, there's notes during this, to be sent to council, that we had a split on the potential to further look at...
Twenty-five.
Speed, I'm not even putting a number.
That's what the split is on.
Potential lowering the speed, and also some safety concerns at the bridge.
The bridge and the east side shared path.
East side shared path.
Can we also make a note that, that the city traffic engineer also stated that they have already studied?
That, well, they know that.
Okay, but let's make sure we make that clear.
That's why I said a split.
Okay.
Split, there's a split with the commission.
All right, I'm gonna leave it at that, but I'm just also gonna add, because I can't just leave it at that, that sometimes that's why these meetings go on forever, not saying that your concerns or anybody's concern is not important, but if, if our traffic engineer just stated, and our lawyer, and the city staff, that they've done the study, it's not something that's feasible, why are we still negotiating about it?
Because I think there's a potential, we're looking at planning in the future, and the question is, is that if anytime during the future, something changes, we would like that to be looked at and then implemented at that time.
Okay.
Something may change.
Something may, but it's probably not.
Be that as it may, we are down to the next to last item.
And we're down one commissioner, thank you all, have a good night.
When you were saying, I think, at that time, you'd see, I did this motion, like I did this motion, they were letting go.
Oh, no worries.
Okay.
The spectator.
Next item on the agenda, CP eighteen dash zero 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 three.
The garage.
Midnight, midnight.
Midnight.
We're leaving before midnight, but I need to get through this.
Good, good. To the margin.
The next item on the public hearing agenda is CP eighteen dash zero 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 three Ridge, Fifth Ridge McIntyre Multimodal Corridor Study. Pursuant to Virginia Code Section fifteen point two dash twenty-two thirty-two and City Code Section thirty-four dash twenty-eight, the Planning Commission will review the proposed Fifth Ridge McIntyre Multimodal Corridor Concept from the intersection of Harris Street and McIntyre along McIntyre Avenue Ridge Street, Fifth Street Extended to the intersection of Harris Road and Fifth Street Southwest. Character and extent of the proposed improvements are substantially in accord with the city's adopted Comprehensive Plan or part thereof. Following the joint public hearing, the Planning Commission shall communicate its findings to the Charlottesville City Council with written reasons for its approval or disapproval. So, we're back at just a recommendation if this meets the Comprehensive Plan. And staff, take it away.
Good evening, again. So, I'm just gonna give a, a quick introduction here and then, and then turn it over. So, this, the, the purpose of this project was to really look at possible future projects for the city and kind of do a high-level planning of it and, and look at opportunities so that when we come across smart scale, you know, TAP grants, you know, other money, state, federal, that we kind of have something that can be presented. You know, we, we didn't want to look at just one section of this because we really saw this as a whole corridor, so this pretty much goes from city line to city line on this Fifth Ridge McIntyre study from Harris Road to Harris Street. So, with that, I'll turn it over and let the consultant kind of give the background and what we've done up to this point.
Great. Thanks, Brendan. Hey, everybody, commissioners, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Mike Callahan, I am a planning consultant with EPR, local firm here in Charlottesville on Jefferson Street, and pleased to present the results of this multimodal corridor study. So, Brendan set it up nicely, this is a city-funded study, really looking at how to make this a more complete street in line with the city's desires expressed through its Comprehensive Plan. I'm gonna move very quickly, I didn't know about the ten minutes, so, I'm gonna move as rapidly as I can here. Comp plan, obviously, strong statement about multimodal transportation, reducing single-vehicle, occupancy vehicle use. We looked at the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, definitely a lot of recommendations for bicycle and pedestrian facilities, all of which we've taken into consideration, and I think you'll see included in the recommendations. We looked at streets that work, of course, those are the parameters for facility design, and those were also an important part of kind of the, the environment in which we were doing our work and, and coming up with the recommendations. In terms of public engagement, we had two public meetings, one last January, about a year ago, one in July. Good input, and I will share towards the end how we incorporated that into the final set of recommendations. We also had a project website, got a lot of comments there. This is a slide with some general themes of what we heard, nothing really all that surprising, definitely a lot of different perspectives, and reinforcing the message that this is a critical artery of the city, north, south, in the central part of the city, and has to work well for all users. Presently, doesn't work as well as it could for all users, and I'll get into that in just a moment. From the engagement priorities, the public made a strong statement, bike, ped is critical, especially for the three northern segments, McIntyre, Ridge McIntyre, Ridge, and then the southernmost segment, safety bubbled up is really important as well. That is a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, bike lanes, and sidewalk with no curbside buffer, and good amount of crashes as well with vehicles. Existing conditions, big part of our work was looking at existing conditions, studying the corridor. It's got this kind of accordion feel and design where the speed limit's going up and down, the lane, lanes are going up and down. In terms of average daily traffic, you're up around twenty-five thousand in the Ridge McIntyre segment, and then down towards the southern and northern ends, you're more in the under twenty thousand, fifteen to twenty thousand range. The transit system is a big part of this corridor, four buses operate on Fifth, south of West Main. All the routes are traversing Ridge McIntyre as they go around the downtown mall. The picture here, I think, is is an important one. That is the most heavily used stop in the corridor, and the the stops really are not very high quality. That's twenty-three hundred people a month board there that's at the Food Lion, so definitely transit's something that is important to think about as we move towards a more complete street. We looked at bike, ped as well. For the most part, pedestrian facilities are present. However, unlike what you saw with Emmett where there's proposed to be a buffer, sidewalks tend to be right up against the curb in this in this area. Bicycle facilities are either lacking or maybe insufficient, especially have an on-street bike lane with forty-five mile an hour speed limit. That creates a bicycle level of traffic stress, three or four. It's the highest you can get. I'd love to see that be a one or two, a one ideally. Safety, this is a really high crash corridor. Here you see the segments, and you see the crash rates, and then you see the state average for that facility type. Every single segment's above the state average for crash rate. For injury rate, Ridge and Ridge McIntyre are above the average. The top intersections for crashes are Ridge McIntyre, Ridge at West Main, Water South. A lot of streets changing names in this area all over, but anyway, that's the, that's right there at the heart of downtown. Fifth Ridge at Cherry Elliott's second by crash and injury rate. VDOT maintains a list of intersections with the greatest potential for safety improvement. The only one that bubbles up to the top one hundred in the Culpeper District is Ridge at Monticello. There were thirteen pedestrian-involved accidents over the five years that we had data. That would be eleven to sixteen, and five of those were at Ridge and Monticello. We looked at vehicular level of service. Cars are part of the mix as well, of course, in this corridor. You know, got to trade off level of service and a lot of other objectives for the design and the future of the corridor, but is an important consideration, and what I would call your, there's a lot up here, but I would call your attention to the reds. That's where there's a lot of delay, and it's at the major intersections. Ridge, Monticello, especially on Monticello, Preston McIntyre going northbound, Water Street, West Main Street, and then some of the side streets on Fifth as well. So, went through that quickly. Go through the recommendations now, and I just want to say, the recommendations, I think, come from three primary sources of information. One is your stated policies, your your vision as expressed in the comp plan, the bike, ped plan, and streets at work. Secondly is the public involvement, and then third is the analysis. So with that said, I'll take it in segments. This is looking at the intersection of Fifth at Harris. What we're recommending here is elimination of that slip lane on Fifth southbound. That's a pedestrian enhancement. That allows for very fast vehicle speeds making that turn. The folks in Willoughby said that left turns coming out of Willoughby onto Fifth southbound really back up that in the mornings, adding a right turn lane there, so we have included that. And then you'll see shared use path, which is the rust color. There is planning going on now for kind of a trail hub at the Fifth Street Station area, and so we think it's important to have a strong facility that can tie into what's going on there. Fifth from Harris to Cherry Elliott, continuing that shared use path, raised bicycle lanes. We actually have in the report either curb divided or raised bicycle lanes, but what we heard from the public is a strong desire and a really strong need for protection and separation from fast-moving vehicle speeds. And also, you know, the importance of looking at that speed, forty-five miles per hour here is quite high. The shared use path, we're recommending switches to the west side at Brookwood, and we would suggest doing something to really make that a safe crossing, looking at that in the design process. As far as a safety improvement on Fifth, R-cuts, restricted crossing U-turns, there's something that's becoming much more popular in Virginia and North Carolina as well. Basically, it's turn right to go left, as I think Brendan described it. And so you can see how that would work here with Cleveland. Rather than be able to go out left to cross Fifth, you'd turn right, go down, make the U-turn at the opening and the median, and then head northbound. This is a safety enhancement, can also be reduced delay as well for for people leaving Cleveland. And then continuing all the way up to the intersection here, same same basic configuration, raised bike lanes, shared use path, shared use path ending at Tonsler and connecting into those emerging trails. That was something called for in the bike, ped master plan. Moving on to the intersection of Fifth at Cherry Elliott. Here, calling for some some bike and ped improvements with the new crosswalks and protective bike lanes, and also extending the on-street bike lanes all the way down to the intersection on Ridge. And then bike boxes, or I'm sorry, two-stage turn boxes for for people turning, bicyclists that are turning, and then bringing a bike lane up Cherry, a wide climbing lane that's very steep, about a nine percent grade. And also a new right turn lane for Cherry eastbound and for Ridge southbound, which helps with the, reduce the delay at this intersection. This was submitted by city staff as a smart scale application. Looking now at Ridge, oh, one other thing, did look at a roundabout here. Grades are too steep, about nine percent coming into the intersection. It would have performed quite nicely, but difficult.
Is there no way to raise that? It is off Cherry that the problem, is it off Cherry?
Uh, it is Cherry, yeah, it's very steep. Yeah, both, probably, yeah. Uh, this It's high up, yep. So here we have Ridge. Sorry, I'm talking so quickly, but I hear the clock ticking in my head. Ridge up to Monticello here. Bike lanes are the big enhancement right now, just on one side. Now you see bike lanes on both sides. That does require an elimination of on-street parking on the west side. We did an analysis of off-street parking for the residences there and found that every single residence except for one has either off-street parking or side-street parking available. And we are maintaining the parking lane on the east side. Those are buffered bike lanes as well. I should also add curb extensions at Dice and Oak to reduce the pedestrian crossing distance. Moving on to Monticello, this is, as I said, one of the safety issue intersections. Here, we were proposing to extend the bike lane up to the intersection, adding another dedicated right turn lane from Monticello onto northbound Ridge. May I have permission to
Yes.
Continue on?
Yeah.
Quickly. This is also, you'll see two northbound lanes on Ridge. The, right now, there's one northbound lane there. The two northbound lanes pick up around where the hatch marks are, so bringing that all the way down to the intersection, there's a, there are a lot of people coming Monticello and turning onto Ridge, and so that's why we've proposed that enhancement for vehicles. Also, you see a shared use path on the west side there of Ridge, which would run all the way down to Preston, which would kind of be the mechanism for closing that gap in the bike pedestrian network. That would require some kind of parallel bridge next to the railroad bridge on Ridge. That is, I think, built in nineteen ninety-four, that bridge, and so it's not gonna be replaced anytime soon. This is an example from Ithaca, New York, of something very similar. And of course, Dairy Road over the bypass is another precedent for doing something like that. The thing that's gotten a lot of attention now, you see on the slide here, roundabout at Ridge McIntyre and Preston. As you see, first of all, there's a lot of, this this is is a really big enhancement for vehicles, also for for bikes and peds. It does reduce speed. It does reduce conflict points for pedestrians. It does provide median, significant median refuges for pedestrians. And you see there in the delay and and volume to capacity ratios that it's a very significant enhancement in delay. Of course, at rush hour, maybe not as much, 'cause no one's really moving well through here, but other times of the day, very helpful. And then finally, McIntyre, Preston up to Harris, extending Schenks Greenway to Preston Avenue is one of the recommendations. Bicycle lanes both directions rather than one direction. A new right turn lane from McIntyre southbound on the Harris Street westbound, and then a right turn lane, Harris Street eastbound to McIntyre southbound. There's a few congestion issues there related to those turn lanes not being in place. And then final thing is also a concept for improving the connectivity for bikes and pedestrians in this area. Ridge McIntyre carries twenty-six thousand vehicles a day, pretty constrained with the buildings coming right up to the to the sidewalk, so one thought we had, and I think this is also something from the bike, ped plan, was using fourth as well as a really strong bike and ped route. And that would require you to put some kind of bridge spanning the railroad tracks. You see the image on the right. That's kind of near Feast. If you know where that is, that is, there's a utility easement through there, so that may be a possibility. Short term, long term, Cherry Elliott's moving ahead with smart scale application, things that don't require, you know, a significant amount of construction, such as restriping bike lanes, the extension of the greenway. Longer term would be the big things, the roundabouts, the intersections, the raised bike lanes. We made a lot of modifications to this plan based on the public comments. Won't go into every line item there since we're over time, and I'd be happy to answer questions and listen to your comments. Thank you.
Just sort of procedural issue. Was this information shared with us before the meeting? I don't see it.
I did not see it in the package.
We had, for this item, there was a link to the materials on the website for the project.
The report.
Apologies, I did not see that link.
I missed it. Questions?
So talk a little bit about the roundabout. I've never liked roundabouts, especially in DC. Those roundabouts in DC, I always get in the wrong lane. So this will be a two-lane roundabout all the way around, or?
This is actually proposed as a one-lane roundabout, but with room to make it two lanes if if need be.
A one-lane's easier to navigate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, big safety improvements from roundabouts, especially serious crashes and injuries, so that's one reason. Some communities have seen them as gateway features. Raleigh, in fact, coming into NC State has put in a series of roundabouts to slow traffic and kind of be a gateway feature, so very, very common for Blacksburg as well. And then also, I think what is not always is recognized is that there are also improvements for pedestrians in particular, because there's fewer conflict points. If you're crossing, you're kind of just now looking at one lane of traffic approaching instead of also being worried about traffic from an opposite lane that's turning.
Would there be multiple lights? Like, there'd be like, yeah, 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 at everything.
No, no, that's, yeah, that wouldn't be I'm not a traffic engineer. Brendan is here to answer the hard traffic questions, but my understanding is it'd be yield.
So it's a yield?
Yes, yeah. The, it it's technically not a roundabout if it has traffic signals on it. It's it's a traffic circle at that point, so
It's a lot of, it's a lot of traffic to yield. I mean, you, five o'clock.
It actually works more efficiently than a stoplight. If if people use it correctly, and there's, all over the country, people have them, you know, they they can move, I believe it's like thirty, thirty-five percent more traffic than a conventional intersection.
And I might add that we did do modeling of this to see how it would perform, which is what you see in the report and also on the slide here.
As one of the Frogger participants at that intersection on a frequent basis, I applaud anything that you can do there. Because it's, it is hard, especially in this area. Yes, in this area, for people of any kind of disability, you cannot get across that street.
Sorry, I'm still struggling with the website. Where is this presentation on the website?
Presentation's not on the website. The report is.
Thank you.
It's down in the belly of the beast on that. You gotta go to our our website, the agenda, go all the way down. It's kind of hidden. Since I printed it out, it didn't come out, so I was thinking, yeah, anyway.
Just where, it's a link to the main website, fifthridgemcintyreplan.com?
Yeah, if you, yes.
But it's not on their website?
The report, the the report is not the PowerPoint.
Right.
The reports.
Just clarifying, this is new information. Because I generally just like to prepare.
Everything that's in here is in that, I mean, in the report board, so it's
Which we did not receive?
Which is a link at the end of the staff report. The the attachment.
To the, I think, I, well, here. It was not attached like the other one, for sure.
Correct. So the main report is posted on the website?
Yes.
Where, please?
Um, I, it's, I I would have to have it in front of me, the website, but it is, there's a link, couple.
I have the technology.
All right. FifthRidgeMcIntyrePlan.com.
Yes, I see it. Yeah, I saw the plain text.
Okay.
So there are some intersections, like Monticello and Ridge, where there's like five lanes that pedestrians are crossing with not, without a refuge midway, five at least. I mean, that's not counting the bike lanes and is that, at what point does it get too long for it to be a safe pedestrian crossing?
Yeah, there is a median there, and perhaps one thing we could go back and look at is extending that out a bit. To have a bit of a refuge, yeah, yeah, because that is
That's long.
That is an additional lane there that's not presently there. Otherwise, it's it's all the same, you know, crossing distance. You know, I think it depends on how much time you have to cross, having sufficient time. One thing that we have recommended throughout the report is leading pedestrian interval as well, so pedestrians can get out ahead of the green light for vehicles. It's a, it's a trade-off. There's a lot of vehicular congestion, there's a lot of pedestrians, so trying to balance
Well, I know who's gonna win in that conflict.
Did, I didn't see on that study about the not fatalities, but the crashes at the Preston McIntyre intersection. Did you have that data?
Preston, where the roundabout is, the roundabout intersection.
Getting hit in that area.
Yeah, I I would have to go back in. We do have every, a cra- every crash record, so we could look to see if there were bike crashes, ped crashes there, but
Are you looking for the crash rate, Lisa?
Yeah.
Well, I just didn't see that on that chart. You guys gave a chart and I didn't see that.
It's number six.
Yeah. It's actually kind of middle of the pack for crash rate, and for injury rate, it's surprisingly low.
Can you go back to the Ridge McIntyre? So this intersection is also a huge problem, and this is where most of the, you know, I've seen a ton of bike accidents right here. And it's this sweep to get here. Have you thought about, I doubt this is gonna make people eliminating that left turn there? Oh, I know, radical, but I mean, it, it, something different. I've, I've been there every day for eighteen years, I'm telling you. I've seen people just get hammered.
That would be market to high.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I'm not suggesting, but you, I think something else needs to be looked at here. Especially, especially now while, because you do have this lane turning, and it's this turn and this immediate get over. There's not enough distance here, and that's where, and this is where a lot of people back up, too. You've got a huge amount of backup here waiting to turn. And most of the time, people don't care if somebody's in this crosswalk.
Yeah.
Is there any elevation here that a pedestrian overpass? No, it's it's all
It's all, it's all, I mean, in that, I mean, you start going uphill at this point, and then you definitely go uphill here, you know, for sure. But this is a huge, huge But this is a huge, huge.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I actually turn there every day. I'm very familiar with it. Bikes are moving really fast down market, which increases, and that may be what the cause of the accidents that you're aware of.
Well, that's true. I mean, you're just, you're getting speed.
Yeah, yeah.
Because when I, when I, well, when I get to ride my bike, you're getting speed, and we try to get speed so you can go up the hill at the county office building.
Yeah.
Because you had to gotta cross the traffic.
And I'm familiar with the study on the rotaries and, but it, what is the biking, the biking communities, the bicycling communities studies say about roundabouts?
Yeah.
Are they a plus or not?
That's a good, that is a good question. I mean, it's.
Peter?
Yeah. I was gonna say, it's actually because the design of them is twenty to twenty-five miles an hour, they're, you know, a bike can traverse it within the travel lane more easily than a conventional intersection where you might have thirty-five mile an hour traffic that's going through there. So it's, the roundabouts are designed so you physically cannot go above twenty-five miles an hour through.
And the research bears that out with bicycling and motorists.
The overriding interest is to reduce the velocity differential, so as he was talking about.
I need you to come up here so she can get this, though.
Yeah, that's good.
Sorry.
That's really good.
And the other thing about that is trying to stop at traffic lights in this intersection on a, well, you know, on a bike, then you've gotta get back speed to go uphill.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a position on, you know, the bike community's part, but the overriding goal, definitely a policy goal, is reducing the velocity differential. So having someone driving twenty-five in a vehicle is not like, as likely to seriously injure or kill someone. Yeah. And that intersection as it was before, or I mean, as it is now, is very challenging for a cyclist or a pedestrian, as you pointed out.
I'm gonna let you talk in a minute, because I know you're signed up. Thanks.
Actually, back on this intersection. I hate slip lanes. So we still have a slip lane from, I think that's, oh, I'm blanking on locations.
Ridge McIntyre.
Ridge McIntyre, yeah. Does that offer value? Would it simplify and improve safety and throughput to just eliminate that?
We would have to look at that again with the modeling. Brendan may speak to it, but you would be, I'm guessing it wouldn't perform as well when we model it, but it would be worth looking at.
Tell me what you're talking about, because I'm not sure.
You're talking the one from High Street onto McIntyre?
Yeah, it just bypasses the circle entirely.
Right.
This one?
No, so up further, yeah.
It takes up a lot of space, doesn't give much value, I think.
There's a lot of crashes there, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of it is, ideally, we would, as you stated, just completely eliminate that, where that road comes out. But, but this idea was proposed years ago, I believe, when Hooja was here. And, you know, the big, I guess, complaint from the residents was that access point. So we're trying to respect the past and not, you know, cause too many waves. But, but yes, I mean, ideally, you would be able to eliminate that completely. Having, having an intersection come in at that location close to a roundabout does pose issues. And again, this is all conceptual, like, when we go to act, this is not the final design by any means. This is, you know, conceptual, so that when we go for funding, we have something to apply for money. So this is gonna go through all of the public engagement and all of that again. So this was, you know, just to get us started, get something on paper so that we can, you know, submit for funding.
Don't you know we're all about wades? Have you not been paying attention this evening?
I do. I know you very well, Lisa. But no, there is, there is a, part of the reason for leaving it is it's, you know, it's already there, you know, the right-of-way is already there. So if it, if it helps the intersection perform better, why not use it? You know, it does, if by doing that, you remove those turns into the roundabout, so you have, you know, less potential for crashes there. So, I mean, we're, we are removing the one that's currently Preston to southbound McIntyre. But yeah, this one, you know, with trying, with the elevation difference and everything else, it does kind of make sense.
Thank you.
Any more questions or a public hearing? I know, since I missed this link, this is, I'd like to visit this a little bit more.
Are we also just, is it in compliance, or?
It is just a vote whether this moving forward would be in compliance with our comprehensive plan. No? Yes? Okay. Public hearing? Great, thank you. I'm sure we're not done. So just, I'd like to open the public hearing for this particular agenda item, the Fifth Ridge McIntyre Multimodal Corridor Study. Please, on the list first is Mr. Krebs. But come on up.
Peter Krebs, Piedmont Environmental Council. And in recognition that it is getting late, I'd like to keep it short. I will say, this is a very strategic corridor. Think about it for moving north and south, but also Fifth Ridge McIntyre can be a real divider, right? And can, can this be a way to get people east and west across the city as well? Can this help us with that? This is a big project. It's quite a bit larger than the Emmett streetscape. And I think there's a lot to see in the report, and it is worth spending some time. I read the whole thing through twice. I didn't come through it. It's pretty solid. Take some time of your own and look through it, and, thank you.
Thank you.
Still good evening.
Yeah.
My name is John Erdworm, and I live on Burnett Way off of Elliott Avenue. I am highly familiar with the intersection of Elliott, Cherry, and Ridge McIntyre. It is a terrible intersection. You've already seen the data on it. This is a plan overall is a step in the right direction. However, as usual, the problem is unless some of these projects are broken out and addressed in the relatively near future, maybe five years, this total project, where would the funding come from? Where, VDOT is not gonna step up and say, oh, sure, we'll, we'll do this. My other, and that intersection is so critical, because this is all very nice to look at these plans, where these nice arrows and all this stuff, but I don't see where the major places of Charlottesville are reflected on this. And I am talking about UVA Hospital, which is a massive enterprise. You probably have noticed that even more buildings are going up. And how does the staff get there? Many of them are trying to get across Elliott and Cherry, and that has now become Charlottesville's own little LA, if you've ever driven in LA, right in that area twice a day. It is almost a gridlock. And if there's an accident, when there's an accident, it is extremely difficult for emergency vehicles to get to that intersection and take care of whatever needs to be done. The other thing I would point out is the roundabout, that's gonna be a very, very tough sell. There are two aspects of it. First of all, at least in my casual reading, roundabouts are generally not recommended in urban cities. You don't see them, the ones I've, I've driven around them, and they're usually in much lower density road areas. You can drive up to Leesburg and go a couple, around a couple of them on fifteen. I don't know whether this would actually be helpful. There's two aspects of it. First of all, it has a great potential for being a total ugly eyesore right in one of the main approaches to downtown Charlottesville. If you like a large span of concrete standing there with nothing, I don't know. I don't, I don't see that being a very good public amenity. The other aspect of it is there is a driver anxiety associated with roundabouts. And that is, you come in here and you've never driven around this roundabout before, and you're from another state, and you're visiting Charlottesville, and you come up to this thing and you go, oh my God, what are the rules? Who has the right-of-way? Do I just go in and I have to be let in? Do I stop? I've seen this happen at roundabouts, people just coming to a dead stop, they're not sure who gets to go around this thing first. And for some drivers, this is, this is, really becomes very difficult. And what you will get is people who will try to avoid them. And once again, you will be faced with people trying to get onto the local, other local streets just to avoid one of the major intersections. So I would hope that they would clearly look beyond the strict traffic engineering aspects of this and look at the social and psychological aspects of it. And Ms. Green is absolutely right about the danger to bicyclists that already exist at this. And the last thing we would want is to see that not reduced. Anyway, good night, and thank you guys for hanging in here.
Thank you.
Thank you for hanging in.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this project?
Good evening, I'm Susan Sherman. I live on Harris Road in the Willoughby neighborhood. And Ms. Creasy had some documents that she shared, including some really horrible hand-drawn illustrations, but hopefully they'll help me out tonight. The intersection at Willoughby, Harris Road, and Fifth Street is a terrible intersection. And I know that right now that you are recommending compliance with the comp plan, but again, here are some concerns from a neighborhood that's involved in the corridor study. The site of, this is a site of numerous serious accidents, including one that took the life of an Alamooral County teacher in 2016. The study timeframe of the multimodal study is 2011 to 2016, yet it failed to document this fatality. The report, in fact, states that no fatalities occurred in the corridor within this timeframe. Additional accidents have occurred since the study concluded. In November 2018, my neighbor Sandra Murray sustained serious injuries and totaled her car when she was T-boned. Three weeks after Sandra's accident, there was another accident at the same intersection. Certainly, some of the crashes at this intersection result from north or southbound drivers on Fifth Street running a red light at Harris Road, and that's a hard problem to fix. The issue I'm most interested in is the traffic flow onto Fifth Street from Harris Road, specifically when cars are coming out of Willoughby at the same time that cars on the Jackson Villa side are coming onto Fifth Street, heading north on Fifth Street towards downtown or south towards Wegmans. Removing the slip street as recommended would help southbound heading towards Wegmans. Cars coming out of Willoughby on a green light have the right-of-way to proceed straight across Fifth Street to the other side, or to turn right onto Fifth Street heading north towards downtown. There is a sign hanging from the traffic light at the intersection facing the vehicles coming from the Jackson Villa side that cautions those cars to yield to oncoming traffic on the green light. And oncoming traffic would be those of us coming from Willoughby. However, very often, those drivers do not yield to the cars coming out of Willoughby, and they instead proceed to make a left turn heading north onto Fifth Street, as we, who have the right-of-way, are attempting to either cross the intersection to go straight or to turn right. Additionally, cars coming from Jackson Villa side wanting to turn right onto Fifth Street to get to Wegmans have to get into that left-turn lane to Wegmans almost as soon as they turn onto Harris Road, requiring them to dart across a lane of traffic at this intersection. My neighbors and I hold our breath when we enter the intersection, hoping for the best. And those of us, including myself with teenage drivers in the family, are anxious when we hand our kids the car keys. In early 2018, my neighbor Mike Meenschel spoke in person with Brendan Duncan at the city about the dangers of the intersection. Mr. Duncan assured my neighbor that the city would paint directional lines as an initial stepped, step to ensure that traffic churning left onto Fifth Street from the Jackson Villa side would stay on the inside lane as they turned left onto Fifth Street. Yet nothing was done during 2018. This December, my neighbor Mike returned to Mr. Duncan's office and inquired about the lack of progress. Mr. Duncan admitted to Mike that he had forgotten about it, and that it would now need to wait until the weather is better in the spring, and this is unacceptable. On December 17th, 2018, I emailed Mr. Duncan to inquire about the addition of a green arrow on the traffic light at Harris Road facing Fifth Street. Mr. Duncan responded that, quote, "What you suggested about individual left signals is what is referred to as a split phase. Unfortunately, due to the heavy traffic at this particular intersection, the measure would cause too much delay and backup traffic even worse than it does today," end quote. It seems to my neighbors and me that the solution is some combination of the following. One, paint lines to keep cars in the correct lanes as they turn. Two, left-turn arrows on the lights at Fifth and Harris. And three, adjusting the timing on the light of Fifth Street into Fifth Street Station that works to alleviate the backup on southbound Fifth Street, especially at rush hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening, I'm Joan Alveston, and I also live in Willoughby, and I would second much of what she said. I feel that our intersection of Harris and Fifth Street is a dangerous intersection. It's dangerous because of the speed limit, forty-five minute, forty-five miles an hour. That's ten miles an hour faster than much of the 250 bypass. We have difficulty with sightlines because of the grades, and I'm not sure that can be changed because of the downward from Harris and upward approach from Fifth Street. We also have a lot of increased congestion due to the Fifth Street Station traffic, and people are frustrated and they're impatient. We bear the brunt. Our neighborhood bears the brunt. Coming out of our neighborhood gets to be frightening. I have a fourteen-year-old who will have a driver's license in a couple of years, and I'm scared for her at that intersection. That intersection scares me more than any other intersection in Charlottesville. So I feel that this intersection, the safety issues, not just convenience, but safety issues, need to be addressed now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, or almost morning. I'm Bob Troy. I'm president of the Willoughby Property Owners Association, and our members and residents are very concerned about the safety circumstances at the intersection of Fifth Street and Harris Road, primarily as we exit Willoughby. The speed limit on Fifth Street extended is stated, is listed at forty-five miles an hour, but the fact of the matter is it's frequently fifty-five to sixty mile an hour flowing traffic. And that's the way it's been. And I know that doesn't happen when we get congestion, but that, I think, is part of the cause of a lot of the accidents that we have. And the accidents there, while they might be fewer in number than some of the others identified in the corridor, they tend to be more severe, as was mentioned. Part of that is line of sight. As you approach the intersection on Fifth Street, both northbound and southbound, the light does not come into view until the possibility to stop from those normal flowing speeds becomes quite dangerous. And I would suggest that at least we consider a synchronized flashing yellow caution that would trigger on yellows or before the lights begin to change to give those drivers warning. Because not everyone who finds themselves in a spot potentially running a red light is intending to be reckless. And I just want to reiterate that this is a circumstance that affects all of our neighbors, our families that commute every morning, our young drivers in our families, and all of our children that board school buses, both exiting and re-entering the neighborhood. And so I really have serious doubts as to whether. as to whether this plan at Fifth and Harris really meets the standard for safety that's in place for the comprehensive plan. Also, I want to share other frustration about the availability of the report. I was not able to find it on the study's website. I was not able to find the link in the agenda before this evening. And I, I hazard say that we might have far fewer neighbors in the room tonight, if we had seen it. Among the things that's buried in there is also the assumption of easement use through parts of our property, which are utility easements. They're there for utility work, for the services authorities, and various folks that have access through our properties to do vital, important work. They are not signed over at this point for pedestrian and other, other use from other groups. We're very open to that, we're open to that discussion. But as yet, the city has not approached this on that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this project? If not, I will close the public hearing and open this up for discussion. Let me see, maybe just, I want to be clear about this really quick.
What is this, compliance?
This is in compliance with the comp plan, is what we're discussing. However, this is just a very preliminary, and I'm asking. This is just a very preliminary plan that still needs more engineering, more safety study, and more design.
And more public engagement.
Public engagement, right? So that it can get smart scale funding. Or be, it's been submitted for smart.
No.
So, so again, this, we, we treated this as a whole corridor study, but this is fully intended to be broke into smaller projects. But we didn't want to just, again, just focus on one project. So we did submit one of the intersections, the Cherry-Elliott Ridge intersection was submitted this year for smart scale funding. And we did that using the, you know, the, I guess, draft status of this, just so we had something to submit. That was, it was one of the top two or three in the, you know, Streets That Work recommendations. So that was one of the four or five that we, we submitted for the city.
Do you, when do you anticipate Harris being submitted?
The Harris, on the, Harris Road on the south? We don't have any plans right now to submit that one for funding.
Can you just get back with the neighbors, please, and make them happy?
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, communication will help with the happiness.
We're never happy.
Okay. What, questions, concerns, comments, motion?
I, I have a question for staff in terms of traffic and utility. When, when you hear the concerns about imminent, immediate safety concerns, do you liaison with police department? And are there, are there old-school methods that could immediately take place that wouldn't require paint or hardware or lane adjustments? I.e., a police officer with white gloves directing traffic at key dangerous times?
We don't have the, the police staff to, to do traffic, you know, through, through, through the intersection. I mean, that's what the signals are for.
And are they adequate, is what I'm asking. Are the signals working?
The signals are working. I mean, a, as one, one person stated, you know, a lot of these accidents are people going through red lights, and there's not, there's not much that we can do to, you know, from a, you know, engineering standpoint to stop driver behavior. You know, we can look at doing some, you know, advanced lighting. We talked about a lot of the, the conflicts at the intersection, what they were talking about with the, the paint is, right now, people that are coming east on Harris from Jackson Villa, it's one lane and you're going into two, and rather than turning into the near lane, they're turning into the far lane. So that's, that's really what the, the kind of short-term paint is. I've, I've already talked to Public Works. We've got it on their radar for when weather warms up. We use thermoplastic for our, our striping, so it can't be done in cold weather. So, you know, we're, we're waiting for that. But yeah, that's kind of what we're, we're working towards.
I have a concern. This is a 53-page report. I'm excited to read it. I haven't read it. I can't really speak on it.
You found it?
I can't.
No, the, he was able to give you a link.
Oh, okay.
I guess I'm curious, too, about the timing of, you know, putting a project like this together. Was a reaction or a response to an acknowledged unsatisfactory situation, right? No?
No, the smart scale funding for the Preston Cherry, I think, to move forward.
Yeah, so this, this came about after the Streets That Work plan.
For the whole city.
And there were several, several of these intersections were on the priority list. So again, rather than looking at them as individual projects, we said, "Let's go ahead and look at this as a whole." When we spoke to them, you know, to the community earlier, it was at one of the meetings, the preliminary meetings for this, that we had talked about it. I admit that, you know, it fell off of our radar. We're, we're short-staffed, we've got a lot of projects going on. And, you know, we'll, we'll get back on it and try and address it. But, but yeah, this, this, this wasn't in response to safety concerns at the time. This was just, it was preemptive on the city trying to, to get stuff together so that we weren't working reactive.
Okay.
May I make a suggestion? When y'all come to us, if you're going to do a PowerPoint presentation, we really like to read that prior. We like to have that in front of us, so that we can have that conversation. We get it a week before, and we really like to look at that. So...
I believe I have a motion.
Okay.
I move to defer, giving us time to review, review the materials and better understand them.
Motion for deferral. Is that something you can do? Yeah, yeah, okay. Have a motion for deferral, do I have a second?
Second.
Second? A motion and a second for deferral.
So a deferral or a tabling then automatically puts it on our worker, work session agenda? Is that right? No?
No, puts it back to a...
Regular item.
Regular item on the next meeting and another public hearing.
No, well, you don't necessarily have to do another public hearing. You've done a public hearing.
So a deferral puts it on the...
Consent agenda?
I don't, I, if you all chose to do that.
Before I can vote, I need to know what...
Right.
And I think the public needs to know, too.
We typically put something that's been deferred on the regular agenda.
Okay. So just make, just, again, to make clear, this is a s...
Conformity with the comprehensive plan.
Conformity with the comprehensive plan. If this were to move forward, or even now or next time, then moving forward, how would this come back before the body? Or how would it come back before the public so that... I mean, is this going to have to come back before us at all, at any point?
It would, um, yes. If it comes, if, if it were to go forward, receive smart scale funding, and, and the city actually acquires the funding through that process, there would be a public participation as part of that. We had Emmett Street come tonight for a conceptual plan, so it would follow a similar track to that, as well as East High, some of the other smart scale projects that we've had. This is, this is just putting some, some information data on paper that would allow for a stronger smart scale application. The length, with the length of this, I know that it would be broken into phases. So there may be a discussion about which phase makes the most sense, but...
Well, we already know, because there's, the smart scales only for Cherry Ridge. So that we know would be first. So smart scale funding, is there any, if it's smart scale funded, is there any, uh, is there any dollars that are, have to be leveraged from the city, or is this a 100% smart scale funding project?
Smart scale is 100%. It's on a two-year schedule, so we just submitted this year. The next submission would be two years from, so 20, 2020 would be the next submission.
And so if that were to happen, and that comes back, and then more, in order to get a more detailed, that would come back before us for conceptual, would have to go through a pub, a major public engagement process?
Correct.
Okay.
So what I'm starting to realize is that, really, clearly, this is not perfect. And it needs a lot of work yet, and needs a lot of public engagement. But the first step is just getting it into queue so that it can move forward. So deferring it really almost, it's going to take longer to fix specific problems. And, and I'm, so I, I'm, I'm coming to the realization that this is more of a formality to get it moving so that it can get back into a study, and we can get public engagement and get the, the problems fixed, and get the appropriate input.
The only question I have about that is, I don't understand why we just had the Emmett Street come before us to see if it's in comp plan, if it's in compliance with the comp plan. And it's very detailed, and been through all the process, and it already has smart scale funding.
But also, I mean, earlier on, that had to come to you all prior to...
I don't remember that far back.
Yeah, there is, there is a UVA study that was done, that, that was used to submit for that one for...
Okay. Here's my other question. This can't be reviewed, but, well, I'm asking. Is it, because I remember some things from the NPO. This can't be reviewed by the state for smart scale funding unless we've had this vote that it's in compliance with the comp plan?
It, it makes our application stronger to have, to have the...
Because we did that with a small area plan at Hydraulic, because they were submitting for smart scale funding in there. Okay.
Right, it might seem counterproductive to vote for this motion when...
We've got to take a vote on it anyway.
We've got to take a vote on the motion.
I'm with you, I don't like not having it, but...
I might, I might vote against this motion.
Why don't we call, roll, and see where we are?
Okay, this is on the motion for deferral. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. LaHondro?
No.
Mr. Soliates?
Yes.
Mr. Heaton?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
And Ms. Green?
No.
I only seconded it because I wanted to...
Isn't that against the rules?
Vote against your own second.
We didn't second it, we couldn't discuss it.
I know, I know. So we've, we had a motion to second, that motion did not pass.
He makes a lot of motions that die because of no second.
I know, tonight has not been a, a good second night for you. So, does anybody else have a motion there?
I have a motion. I move to deny.
Deny?
Deny.
Well, it's not a deny or a approval.
You're moving that it's not in compliance.
Not in compliance is not in...
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Move to deny, okay. Do I have a motion for denial that is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan? Do I have a second? I think this one is dying on the vine. Do you want a second and have a discussion?
Um, no, we've got to have a discussion.
I have a motion. Move to approve.
Could I read this for you?
I wish you would.
Uh, I move, move that the planning concepts of the Fifth Ridge-McIntyre multimodal corridor study located from the intersection of Harris/McIntyre Road to the intersection of Harris Road/Fifth Street extended to the city of Charlottesville, generally, general character, location, and extent of the proposed improvements are substantially in accord with the city's adopted 2013 comprehensive plan or part thereof. That is your motion?
Yes, that's exactly it.
And I'll second that one.
I'd say I beat you to it.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Creasy, will you call, roll?
Mr. LaHondro?
Aye.
Mr. Soliates?
No.
Hey, hang in there, everybody.
Hang in there, everybody.
We've got a ways to go. Uh, Mr. Heaton?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yep.
And Ms. Green?
Aye. That motion carries.
Is there an award for the most much? We should have one.
Is there, is there a point of personal privilege?
Uh, yes.
Or not personal privilege?
Do you need to take a moment break?
No.
You sure?
No, it's just the safety concern.
At some point, you just kind of, you know, behind me.
I think that...
You, this is, yes, you have a few times. The S U P, they are being, that you haven't given them a COA yet, that they're having a discussion.
Hi, Jeff.
They want to see where you all are.
You know that?
I remember the meeting.
All right, well, whatever.
I mean, I'm not...
You can truly hire a traffic cop. Who's not a peace officer.
Okay. We got one to go, so I appreciate your patience. Thank you so very much. We have a preliminary discussion, a preliminary discussion on the entrance corridor of 140 Emmett Street Gallery Hotel. Have we not had this discussion already? I think I've seen this like six times. It's like Justin Shimp with his storage unit.
It's late, uh, yeah.
You know, I don't care.
I think you've seen it three times.
Three times? Okay.
Or at least twice, I know that.
Please tell us how this is different the third time.
Well, you know, and, and I have, I can introduce this. I know it's late, everyone's tired, I'm tired. It's my birthday, and I've spent my entire waking moments. And I was up late last night following...
You mean, is going to be your birthday in 20 minutes, or is it right now?
It has been, and I stayed up last night late following my son's tweets from downtown Clemson, so he's having a big time.
Man, more eagle, baby.
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah. The, um, just quickly, so this is a entrance corridor review for a certificate of appropriateness, but this is a preliminary discussion, hopefully leading to a, an application for your February meeting agenda. Again, Gallery Court, 140 Emmett Street. It's a six-tenth of an acre site. It's land use designation mixed-use. The zoning is urban corridor mixed-use within an entrance corridor, and it is within subarea C of the Route 29 North entrance corridor. As you know, this is the site of a hotel that was destroyed by fire back in May 2017. Since then, the site has sat unused and occupied. Applicant is requesting, will be requesting a COA for the construction of a seven-story hotel, accommodate 79 rooms and suites. It'll have structured parking, small street-level cafe space. And prior to formally requesting that COA, the applicant has requested this preliminary discussion order present and vet three design options that they've come up with. And the intent tonight is, based on that input, be able to prepare a final design and submittal package. So just quickly recap, yes, in March of last year, you all had a preliminary discussion on this relative to the special use permit request and, and on the entrance corridor COA. In September, you had a joint planning commission city council hearing on a special use permit request relative to increasing the height from 60 feet to 80 feet. Wearing your entrance corridor review board hats, you all determined that the special use permit request would have an adverse impact on the entrance corridor. And you requested that a minimum there should be a six-foot planting bed and a seven-foot sidewalk.
Can I hold you for a second? Do I need to gavel us into the entrance corridor review board?
Not yet.
Not yet, you're, you're fine.
We're fine, okay.
Well, I was going to say, because it's not, you're not taking action.
Yeah, there's no action.
But you would be offering comment as the RB, so...
I will gavel us out of the planning commission and into the entrance corridor review board. I will gavel us out of the planning commission and into the entrance corridor review board, thank you.
During the subsequent discussions you all had as the planning commission, um, you did recommend approval of the SUP, you asked the applicant to, to address a couple of issues when it came back, one of them was to activate the streets gate, break up the massing, and have the building step back from the street, um, in October, city council approved the requested special use permit, and there's a series of additions which I, were included in the staff report or in the introduction of this, um, so again, prior to coming forward with a formal application of COA, the applicant is tonight asking for your feedback on the materials they'll present shortly, and you're not being asked to take any action, uh, relative to what will be presented, each of the three design options is consistent in massing scale, height and configuration of what was the design that was presented to you during the review of the special use permit, um, each maintains the block L configuration is the long side of the L is fronting on Emmett Street, the short side, bottom of the L facing the universities of south, um, all of them have a tower, uh, at the apex of the L, um, each design option is a feature street level cafe, um, entrance to the park and garage, trellis patios over the cafe, uh, each on the south side, south of it features a crown level patio and a trellis third floor balcony, um, where they do differ, these three options, where they do differ from the preliminary designs in their materiality and the color palette, um, and the applicant will discuss those in a mowing, excuse me, uh, as with the preliminary design that you all looked at, the three options, they do generally follow the EC guidelines, uh, pedestrian routes are addressed, streets, gates addressed, uh, building placements such as orienting the facade to the front of the corridor, parking is concealed within the building, the mass scale and height, uh, recommendation to use variation materials, textures, patterns, colors, details to break down the scale, the massing of the building is all accomplished, uh, the facade is oriented towards the primary street or towards the entrance corridor, um, materials are, offer a texture and a voidment on his surfaces, the color palette is limited, uh, architectural details, uh, they do create designs of interest, they do avoid large expanses of blank walls and et cetera, um, the EC guidelines recommend that new buildings' design should be compatible in massing scale materials and colors with those structures that contribute to the overall character of the corridor, however, given the dearth of buildings in this segment Emmett Street, um, this hotel will actually become, uh, the design benchmark for whatever follows, and in that light, um, uh, the applicant agrees it's important that, that we get this one right, so wrapping up, um, again, what the applicant is seeking from you all tonight, we'll, we'll show you each of the three designs, you won't see much difference in them, but we want to get some sense of where you all stand, um, take a look at the materiality and the color palettes, um, do the proposed designs adequately address the comments that you all expressed at the September 11th meeting, and that was to activate the street, break up the massing, and for the building to step back from the street, and finally, if, if there's any additional comments that you think would be helpful in, uh, the applicant developing and, and pulling together that final submittal package, uh, for the COA, that would be very welcome, so I'd like to turn it over to the folks that are here to present, and...
All right, thank you, Jeffrey, the city staff, and the members, and that is correct, uh, this is our third time here, and we're glad to be here, it is late, uh, the garage is open 24 seven, uh, 24 hours, so we're safe, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Neil, he's our lead architect with NBJ Architecture out of Richmond.
Let's not go 24 hours.
I know.
Okay.
I, I, I'll, I'll promise, we'll make it quick, uh, the idea goal is to introduce the project to you, uh, in the three forms that, uh, Jeffrey has described, and, uh, just get some feedback from you folks, here's Neil.
I can't help you with that.
Government cutbacks, government shutdown. Non-essential.
Joe, David, David, isn't his name David? I think his name's David.
I don't know. Here he comes. I hope he has a hobby. Excuse me.
Okay, I'm Neil Bart, the architect for the project, and most of the presentation we have, and most of you have seen before, but those are the new members, I'll just run through quickly what we have, you have seen before, so, uh, the site, uh, which you are all familiar with, so I'm gonna zip through this file, and then we'll get to the design quickly, uh, this is all the site orientation slide, uh, the site plan comments which are made both at the planning commission and at the city are all incorporated in the site layout here, uh, so I'll be focusing more on the architectural part, because most of the site comments are already incorporated. The building design hasn't really changed, other than we accommodated the, uh, vehicle loading and loading inside the building, which we had to change the garage, we had some of the garage configuration and the height of the garage to accommodate that, that triggered some domino effect into our design, and that basically have led us to remove the conference area we had on the main level, and we now have just the guest room, so suites on that level, so the main conference area is now removed from the main level, uh, upper levels are still the same type of guest room areas, in the top floor, the seventh floor, we'll have an open terrace, uh, on one side facing that Ivy Road, I think, um, uh, there was a comment about the mechanical units, so we have shown the mechanical units on the roof, they will not be visible from anywhere, and they will be appropriately screened, we have shown a general location of that, those two units there, uh, this shows how the building is configured, it's an L-shaped, uh, pretty much the same way it was presented during the, uh, planning commission and city presentation, uh, the heights have been adjusted within an 80 feet to accommodate the higher height at the garage level entry, uh, and this is the section through the other side, we are meeting the 80 feet, these are the views which we are presenting, so this is what we would like you to focus on, so this, here is the initial design which we came to present the work session for the planning commission, then what was approved is SUP is on the right side, which had the retail portion added, uh, in a black color, and then the rest of the building still remained what we had presented initially, uh, there were comments given to us during this presentation that we focused on three main aspects, one is to keep the vehicles inside the garage, so they will be loading and, uh, unloading within the garage, uh, reduce the impact of the tower, and obviously break the mass which the cafe breaks the mass, so here is what we came up with, uh, so while working on it, uh, we focused more on the reducing the impact of the tower, and that led to, one thing led to another, and we thought that maybe we meant to change the, uh, the materiality of this, this proposal, so we came up with a scheme which is distinctly different than what we have proposed, and that's the reason we are here, so we changed the tower, made it more simpler tower, it does not have a cap at the top, uh, we made it somewhat muted tower, uh, and make the facades, uh, somewhat of a darker color, so they also recede back and give an illusion of a lesser height, you know, uh, the top floor, we changed it to a metal panel, and then that bleeds down into the, the rest of the tower, uh, making it more lacy and less imposing, uh, imposing rather, uh, on the facade, we changed the lower level from dark color to light color to make it more, uh, light and airy, to blend with the rest of the, you know, tower area, so that, that's our first proposal, uh, the only change, you can see the three, you can see the garage now has the taller entrance, so it's a 14 feet, uh, roughly 13 feet, six inch to 14 feet, which require for truck to go in and load and unload, uh, we obviously have reduced the tower to bare minimum, simple tower, uh, and then obviously changed the material, rest of the design is basically still the same, you know, so, uh, so that's our first palette, and we have the, uh, samples here, so that's the black, blue-black brick which we are proposing on the most of the building, uh, the white, uh, the beige color tower and the base is that, basically the materials, it's a large format tile, and the metal panels will be, at the top, would be this color, and I'm gonna quickly give you the, all three options, and we can come back and talk about it, so, this will be the view from the other side, as you can see, uh, it, basically, you're more relating to the pedestrian level on this side, uh, and you barely can see the tower from this angle, the second proposal we have is exactly opposite of the first proposal, which is the darker tower, and the lighter, uh, lighter body of the building, rest of the design remain exactly identical, so all three options are exactly identical design with three different materials, and because we can make, uh, we had obviously internally has preference of one or the other, depending on who you ask, so our client, uh, has preference in exactly the order we are presenting, he likes the first option the most, uh, this is his second preference, where the tower is darker and then most of the body of the building is lighter, uh, otherwise, the proposal is exactly the same, when you look at it from the other end, uh, this is what, uh, this will look like, uh, this basically make the lower portion go away, uh, emphasize more on the building of the tower, and then we obviously went back to, what if we have to stay with what we had presented before, then this is what it will look like, uh, that we kept the materials as we had presented before, uh, made the tower simpler, garage taller, and the top level a little more, or receding away visually from the red brick by using this gray material which bleeds down into that, uh, tower, so tower loses its, its impact, and it becomes more a lacy facade, and that's basically, uh, what we are presenting here and looking for your input, in which direction would you suggest that we continue and come back for certificate of appropriateness? I'll get you back to the first option till you can focus on.
I have a procedural question. Will this be going before us or another body?
It would come back to the ERB for a certificate of appropriateness.
Would that ERB look like these people or different people?
No, it's these people.
It's the people in this room.
We are the ERB.
So this is just a preliminary view?
We're the ERB right now.
For the ERB?
Correct, they're, they're...
We'll be the ERB when he comes back.
Yes, they're, they're requesting feedback on options and then the, um, if there are any other comments prior to them finalizing an application to come forward.
I, I'll just say that I would concur with the preference that the designer, I like number one best.
And, and thank you, the goal, goal here, as we did in March, is to receive some input from you so we can go back to our drawing boards, uh, and again, as Neil mentioned, uh, internally, we've gone back and forth, uh, so, yeah, we're, we're open to your comments and suggestions.
So do you mind showing us how you responded to our comments of breaking up the massing and stepping back from the street?
Well, that, again, we had already presented that we added the retail cafe, here's a low, lower scale building in front of that seven-story building.
But that was here, our comments were on that.
Yeah, we, we have not set back any, any portion of the building, uh, just because our program would work with that, so what we have done is changed the material in a way that it looks that the top level is...
And we still have a tower at the corner, and all we've done is changed lipstick.
We have taken the big cornice which you could see here, you can see this tower was a lot more imposing, and we had the more cornices at the top, which made the tower look more imposing, so is the building, the cornice at the top of those two sides were more prominent, and now, if you can see...
So we, um, additional height was granted, and the entrance corridor board, um, believed that the additional height would be detrimental in this area because it would, the building would be, especially the way it was designed, to look more soaring and taller than what it should compared to the, um, to the context, and, and I don't see anything that's been done to, to address that, despite our, our, uh, um, what we, uh, the, the instructions or the direction that we gave.
But that was an SUP for height.
Yeah, but then the, the...
But then the entrance corridor.
Did we review that? You haven't reviewed, uh, you all noted that, that, um, as part of the SUP from the entrance corridor standpoint, that it would have an impact on the district, um, that, uh, recommendation was provided to council, um, so council had that information as they moved forward with approving the SUP with conditions.
So we, we decided it had, the ERB decided it had an adverse impact on this entrance corridor because of the increased height at 80 feet and proximity to the road, um, and so we advised to break up the massing and step back from the street, not change the colors.
Where's the, um, conditions?
I'm looking at page four.
I'm just looking at what council approved.
Oh, oh, I don't know what they...
Well, that's, I think, what we have to go by.
Uh, that was...
What council approved for the special use permit for the height is that, one, now before resolved, that the special use permit hereby granted to authorize the construction of this project of the subject property, follow the, subject to the following conditions, the building to be constructed for the project shall not exceed eight, height of 80 feet, any proposed final site plan shall include building elevations with sufficient detail to allow city to verify compliance with this condition, the landowner shall provide a U-bike station for the project funded jointly by the landowner and the University of Virginia, prior to submission of the final site plan, project, the landowner shall make a request to Virginia seeking the university participation written funding agreement, if the University of Virginia, blah, blah, it's about U-bike. I'm sure y'all did, um, any proposed final site plan for the project shall show a six-foot wide curbside buffer along Emmett Street North to be constructed and planted as a part of the project, any proposed final site plan for the project shall show a seven-foot wide sidewalk along the length of the subject property's frontage on Emmett Street North to be constructed by the landowner to the city standards as a part of the development of this project, the proposed final site plan for the project shall show a future five-foot wide bicycle lane... shall show a future five-foot wide bicycle lane along the frontage of the subject property on Emmett Street with dimensions and details coordinated with the planned public improvements for the Emmett Streetscape project. And finally, the project will include stormwater management providing onsite water quality treatment by using a best management practice approved by the Virginia Department of DEQ. And then it's more about the BMP. I know the university is kind of butthurt that they didn't get this site. I really do, but they own the property. They own the property.
Wait, what are you saying?
I, 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 you know...
What hurt about what?
Not being able to purchase this property. I know they are. We keep hearing about it. And they own it, and we're gonna continue to go.
What does that have to do with anything? What, yeah, what, what is this discussion about?
Well, the discussion is about, the comments made about how much the university is gonna lose in the last project that we had when they came to the city asking us to close Brandon Avenue for a project. So it's okay to ask for things, but I'm sorry that we wanted it to have that tunnel for the project, for the Emmett Streetscape. And so...
We are, we are working with the city on that. It's not, not a...
But every time we have this, it's a comment about the university didn't like something. And I'm sorry that they, but they don't have to sell to you guys. They don't have to.
Okay, let's just keep going.
Okay.
And you know what I'd like to add to that?
We're not, we're not discussing selling.
I have, I've had a lot of frustrations as well, but I'm not gonna get into that. I do wanna make clear that I'm also, we are actually dedicating two feet of our property towards a seven-foot sidewalk. So there's some stuff that we are giving, you know, being a citizen, local business. And, you know, one thing that I would like to clear is, we've talked about this height. I know we received the SUP was a, you know, a beautiful thing for a city property, as Ms. Dowell said. But, you know, right across the street, there's some things that are going in there. And, you know, it's not my duty to ask what's gonna go in there, but I can, I can bet it'll be somewhere near this in height. I could bet it may be in some palette that it's not gonna go through this body.
You're exactly right.
So, you know, you know, this is an island in itself. And if the city members cannot get with me on this, it's a shame.
I'm gonna finish reading the conditions. The project will be designed to minimum traffic congestion on Emmett Street resulting from the entry and exit of the motor vehicles into and from the project's parking garage. Shall take into account the planned public improvements on Emmett Street for the Streetscape. Egress traffic patterns about Emmett Streetscape project. Project will include devices that will detect oncoming pedestrian traffic that will not, that will provide a warning to motor vehicles exiting the parking garage.
Parking?
Huh? Parking garage. Final site plan shall depict and identify the devices. So their devices about warnings on to Emmett shall be put on the site plan. Lighting installed on the rooftop of the project shall meet the following specifications. Lighting fixtures full cutoff, spill over. Parking on the subject property shall be restricted to use for and in conjunction with the operating of the business of the subject property and by patrons of those businesses. The project shall be designed so that services required for and in connection with the operation of the businesses, subject property, vehicles shall not park on the sidewalk and the public right-of-way, bike lanes, curbside, blah, blah, blah. And the project design shall include features or elements that will reduce the apparent height of the southwest corner of the building, the tower. So there's not the other thing that, as I read it before.
So do you need a motion?
No, there's no motion. It's just discussion.
Changing topic. The conference room, or conference area, did it move? Is it eliminated?
Eliminated.
The, there were, there was a connection with nonprofit meetings, there were, there were public...
We have to find some other location now.
Yeah, and the small space we'll have, to answer that question that came up with another member in the passing, is that snack bar café will utilize that space. And there's an opportunity, which I don't, if I can have this thing working. There is an opportunity, and we'll have to evaluate that. Let's see. Oops, I'm getting ahead. Okay, is this right? Okay. There, there, there may be an opportunity where, you see this top black line? Yeah, that's the level terrace. Yeah. That is, yeah, that became a, a flat surface area that we could possibly engage at floor level from the inside of the building. So it is an open space. I will have to evaluate as we move forward. And we're, in fact, yeah, the gray top right area.
Thank you.
And to answer why the, the conference space, it, it came down to parking. We had to raise the garage from the ground level up, that, and bring all the services in. That eliminates some of the parking spaces. So we didn't wanna have a conflict with the conference facility wanting to use and have parking.
What are you looking for from us? How about that?
Just quickly, so what happened prior to Thanksgiving, they came in and because of having to lift things up a little bit, it changed the shape. And I, I talked to people, and I said, you know, we, we're, we're moving away from what was looked at previously. We really need to stay with this block L, as I've called it, and that configuration, that form, that massing. And so that's when I was contacting somebody, but can we, you know, I don't wanna just go in and put up a new design or a new configuration. And then they were able to work with, get back to the massing and the, the scale. But they are also the change in the material, the change in that, that design element. I felt it was important to kind of get your sense of that change in some way rather than, and I, and I agree, this has been contentious. We know that from, from what happened last year. So I felt that would, it was the wisest course for you all to see, sort of to, to weigh down into that and not come in and simply show something that was different from what we'd seen. But what we would like from you all this evening is that, you know, given the design guidelines for an entrance corridor, it, there's, I mean, I went through, made notes in all of them. You know, where they apply, they seem to apply appropriately. It, it does come down to sort of what's, you know, your sense of the, of the architecture. But as far as the guidelines go, as far as how you all interpret them, this is your opportunity to, to, to give them feedback so that what they come back with, and, and, and I'll agree when I, with them, when I've shown people the designs, they really liked the first one. It's very different from the third, which just looks like something we've all seen before. But, yeah, the goal is if there's issues with that materiality, if there are any issues with that color palette, are there issues with the landscaping? There's, let me show you, there's some actually fairly nice, large, I know, it's like, it's that time. There's, you know, substantial, four large elm on, on the, the, the street side. Again, you know, we're talking about pulling back from the street, and they, they've allowed that seven-foot sidewalk that was requested, the six-foot planning bed on this side, which would be the south side. You've got a large sycamore tree. So the trees will, they've, they've presented the larger street trees as recommended. They're on the tree list. But are there any issues or questions you have about that? Such that, as I said, when they come back in here in a month, we hope, you're looking at something you've seen. And if there are any questions, or, I mean, if you, you all just feel like, oh, my gosh, this is just, you know, you can't go here. It's an opportunity for them to, to shape their application. So the, the list of questions is pretty clear at the bottom of what I offered. So that's what we're hoping to leave with tonight. Something that they can come back with next month that you all are, feel comfortable with.
Well, my problem with it all along, and I don't know why, and it seemed to me that it was captured in the, in the direction that was getting, giving, break up massing, step back from street, that the by right height in this area is sixty foot. It's that way for a reason. It's appropriate for the scale and the context of the things in this area. We gave them an additional twenty feet. And instead of disguising that additional twenty feet, they, the designer ended up accenting it and creating a building that looks every bit as tall as eighty feet as you're standing on that sidewalk next to it. That was the wrong direction, I believe. But that's my opinion.
We didn't help, you know, and the trees, this is, we've had, the BAR has raised this one. Renderings are difficult to, you know, we certainly found out with West Second. There's a lot of detail that gets lost in something that's been copied and printed and copied and printed. I, I didn't realize when I initially looked at it, that was the, the dark colored brick. But another element is often in renderings, they leave the mature landscaping out because they want to show and emphasize the architecture. But, you know, the four trees that are going, you know, elms are big trees. Sycamore are large trees. Would that be, again, with the idea of what would be helpful in the presentation to follow, would it be helpful to see something with a, a more mature, uh, uh, street trees represented in the rendering? Maybe not in all of them, but in one of them to get some sense of how they relate with the, the vegetation. I don't know. That's the type of advice that would be helpful.
I don't have a problem with this at all. I have a problem on a lot of locations, but who knows what's about to come? I truly believe that, and I believe it could potentially be dwarfed. And so while we were trying to hold these people to context, we don't have any other way to hold anything else to context. How tall is JPJ? How tall is JPJ?
Oh, I have no idea. Oh, good Lord, Lyle's gonna look it up.
There's always an answer.
There is always an answer. It's also on a hill, so it's a little bit in...
Yeah, it's set back.
It's on a hill.
And there's a natural area in front that the university, I, God, university gets such hell. And all they've done is improve things. And I can guarantee you, whatever happens across the street is gonna be very nice and appropriate for the street. And appropriate for the pedestrian crossings and the traffic that's on this, the pedestrian and bicycle and multimodal traffic that's on it.
That's, I appreciate that.
I've said my piece. I'm welcome.
How about you? Anybody else have any?
I'm not an architect. I don't... I think it's...
But you're a person that goes down the street, and so you have your own...
I believe that there are places in the city where you need to be very concerned about character and maintenance and historic preservation and things. I don't think this is one of those areas. I think it's a corridor. Economic corridor.
It's an entrance corridor, so it's setting the, I mean, it's, it's that reason for, it's designated that for a reason.
Well, so for the university, which is not our... That's what I, I think the university has plenty of influence on things if they wanna have it. You know, but I don't know, the planning commission, isn't this a by right special exception they're asking for? And they've already been granted the height?
They've ever been granted the height for special, so it'd be an entrance, so we still have to meet the entrance corridor guidelines.
Right.
But you're saying they meet the entrance corridor.
That's up to you.
Can't fight the fight. Yes, you do. You have to fight the fight everywhere.
If I could ask a question, and just following up an opportunity. When they came in in November and changed the configuration, it was more of a C. And I, I said, this isn't the, this isn't that massing that you spoke about. And I said, you, you know, we need to push it back into the L or we really need to revisit this entirely. To give them some direction, the, I'm looking, sorry, Lyle, you had asked about the conference room. That's what was lost in, in getting back to this L. If you all, that would be a question I would ask, is if, if there's some, you know, envisioning that in that back where the, the parking garage comes up, if some use of that terrace would be, in your thought, would it fit within that form and massing that was approved? That, or should they, you know, no, stick with the L that we've got? That would be a question I would have on their behalf, if you don't mind. Because I would have to, what would come back is, I'll get something, just like we've done on others. I'll review it. I'll go through the guidelines and offer my, my judgment of how it fits, what it beats. If they came back with something on that terrace that I felt, you know, was, was intruding on the approved massing, I would have an issue with that. But ultimately, it's up to you all to take the guidelines and, and kind of go through them and, and, you know, you can agree or disagree with my recommendations. But in general, what I'm seeing, they comply with the guidelines. So if you've got any thoughts?
And Lyle, I may just add, you mentioned conference room, and I just thought of something. So we lost a conference space, which is desired, and that's why there's a conference center being planned for the locality. However, what we did do is, from the cafe, we created a terrace from the cafe, which was not previously assigned. It was assigned to the conference room only. So we've gained terrace space for the cafe guests. So that's a trade-off.
Personally, I, I was very excited about a conference space near UVA grounds. The value is obvious. That's a civic value to the city.
Absolutely. I mean, I've been in the hotel business for thirty years, and, you know, obviously, I'm not part of the conference committee that's going on in the city, but, you know, I do pick up on things. However, what, what, one of the biggest criteria, and I said it day one, parking had to be one-to-one for me, for all the guests. There's a hotel that's just went up on Main Street, hundred-and-fifty rooms, ninety spots to park. And they have to have valet parking. That, that was a condition. We did not wanna entertain that. Frankly, there is no parking outside of our facility. So there was a trade-off by providing all the services from within, losing space, and to make up by losing the conference area. And that's, parking was a concern mainly.
That said, I see no aesthetic issues with anything you've shown?
I'd just make one observation, since UVA has kind of been keyed in as the context around here. Mostly, it's traditional brick on all of our buildings. And so however you feel about the black, it will probably be out of context with the rest of UVA.
I would agree, but that's not UVA. That's... I don't wanna own all the property in the county. I just wanna own all the adjacent to mine, right? So it's some, you know, UVA stops somewhere.
It's an entrance corridor review. Context is taken into account. That's the only reason I made that observation.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to own this site, as, I don't know how many times we can say that.
Okay.
In spite of what we've heard tonight.
Fundamentally, my challenge is I, I don't know what the public is going to feel. They were very upset about the initial design. I didn't see the issue, but many people did feel that way. I don't know what people will feel about these.
But it's not part of public, public...
It's, it's aesthetic and subjective.
Right.
I mean, so...
Zayad, do you have anything?
I, um, I do agree that black is not going to fit very well. Because I suspect it's gonna be some sort of red brick or orange brick building across the street that UVA puts up, and so you're gonna have that, you know... And so you're gonna have that, you know, a row of those kinds of buildings, and then boom, across the street, there's one black building that, and this is an entrance corridor. So, I, I agree that. Is it?
It's the way we've evolved.
It's not gonna fit well.
We, we have to go through design review on our end, and it usually ends up being brick.
Yeah.
It's just. It's what it is.
But that's not only, but that something on the black would be nice, something closer to a red, reddish or an orange brick, I mean, the UVA style brick.
And I don't agree, and I know there's gonna be controversy, here's what I would, here's what I would, I thought would be a good, great project. Cavalierian is torn down. There's a performance center going across. Purchase it or not, but be good neighbors, be partners with each other. I mean, how, how awesome is it gonna be for a hotel to be right across from that and be available? But it, it does feel, I mean, I didn't even get these red till you said, we nixed that.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, I wasn't saying that in a negative way.
But it sounded negative.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that it sounded that way. We discussed the issue with Mr. Patel, and it was decided that there was no need for a bike share station there.
But.
It wasn't anything malicious or negative.
But, but even from the very beginning when this came, it was, there was some concern. And, and, you know, and so I, I, what I feel is, UVA does do good work, without a doubt. They're typically great partners, and they really like to be great partners when they come and say, hey, close Brandon Avenue, it's gonna be awesome, let's work together. And on this one, I guess I don't understand why there hadn't been more working together with a neighbor, with a guy that owns a piece of property and said, no, I don't wanna sell. I understand this is right in the middle of all your stuff. But, you know, I get that, and, and, and been a little bit more, you know, wanting to work with a neighbor, as opposed to some adversary. Cause I do feel like there's a lot of adversary against this project. So, I don't know that I have any cons, you know. I'm with you, it's not a UVA property, I'm not wedded to the.
It's, it's only adversarial if you're talking about zoning or ordinances or thing, we're just, we're talking about aesthetics. And, and it's, that's something I don't believe you can be adversarial about, it's, it's a matter of taste.
Well, no, it's not, it's the entrance corridor design guidelines. And I'm sure, I'm looking for them, but I'm sure there's something in here about being a contextual design and materials and.
There it is.
In historic districts there are.
Well, and the design, I mean, that's why we have a design.
It's at the end of this project, I mean, it's at the end of the report.
Oh, okay.
The whole guidelines are attached.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm looking through.
It's, it's after the lighting.
I'm sure Jeff knows them by heart.
Do it, Jeff.
Unfortunately, no, I'm good at memorizing things, these, these have defied me. Yes, the, the general concept of the entrance corridor is, falls in line with, recommend that new building design should be compatible and massing scale materials, excuse me, materials and colors with those structures that contribute to the overall character and quality of the corridor. And that's where I mean, let, I, I don't think the parking garage at the top of the hill, or, you know, I, what buildings, you know, within the entrance corridor, there's really nothing left there. And so that's where, you know, we can make this subordinate to what may go in the entrance corridor. I, I mean, again, you all have that right to do that in your interpretation of the guidelines. But I, I have to kinda fall back on, all right, there's nothing else there, but then does this fit within sort of what we have seen in other places in this, and so go down the other end of the corridor, Barracks Road Shopping Center. You know, the, the, the stuff.
What's at Carmelo's, what is Carmelo's made of?
Yeah, yeah, so, so there's, there's a level of eclectic design here that, you know, I can't deny. I, I can't, believe me, I, you know, I understand the, the UVA architecture, but I, I, as far as the entrance corridor guidelines go, they don't take me down to the lawn. But, again, I can, however you all, that, that, that would be, that would be my recommendation, and that's how I would address it in what you'll probably see. Does that help?
So going south on Emmett.
Kinda stops.
Memorial Gym, we have.
Doesn't go that far, the entrance corridor. And that, I, I, you know, that's. I mean, that's a good question, you know, how far down and far, but that, that's how I'll present it, is what's within the entrance corridor overlay and.
Well, you, you got J P J, you got J P A, and that's a red brick building.
If it's university property, it's not subject to.
But it's red.
Okay. And, and, and that's, that's helpful for, and I can certainly bring that into the. And I think, you know, for me to go down in the staff report and preparing whatever, I'll, I'll make sure to take a good look at what's in the entrance corridor, what's that inventory. What's that?
The old Cavalierian, that's a red brick, UVA colored building.
Which one is that?
The dorms right across the street from where the Cavalierian was, right across.
But the parking deck is not red brick, and it's right across.
Oh, Lambeth.
Lambeth is according to the international.
That blue practice field, I don't know how that fits in.
Where are we?
I'm right here.
Have you got what you need, I think you've got a split.
Have you got what you need from us? I got too much of my dad in me. Yeah, the entrance corridor stops at, at that Ivy Road intersection.
I'm concerned that design review is not a judicious use of the planning commission's time.
Oh, I thought we've had that conversation exactly, and I don't know where that's gonna fall, but you're right.
Time will adjourn.
Have, two seconds. Have, have you gotten everything you need, because we're clearly split.
It actually stood very often, I, I, it's your gentleman, I'll leave it to them to.
No, I appreciate the time, really.
And I, we've got two more members, and I'm not sure which side of the fence they'll fall.
Sir, if I, if, if I'm here next month with the same design, what am I looking forward to?
Well, I would say that when you get to the public comment side is usually when the reactivity will come.
There's no public comment on the ERB.
There won't be any? So you, have you done any just neighborly assertions of, besides your, is UVA your only neighbor?
That's it, really, I mean, those mountains there, but that, that equation is out.
Okay, so they're your only neighbors, okay.
Black gives me a little heartburn.
I thought it looked a little bit modern and.
Hey, doll, what a good one, I'm gonna give it to you.
Well, yeah, this, this might not be appropriate, but we looked at the context much in a greater Charlottesville context. And if you extend Emmett Street all the way to the Stonefield, where we had a couple of hotels, that is completely different than the red brick buildings which we had been seeing in Charlottesville. So the trend is not sticking to the red brick building, but that red brick doesn't give you, that's, that, that's not really is contemporary anymore. Neither is the trend right now in the building design. So if you look at the Stonefield, and I have, I'm doing a second hotel there, I had a hired place there. The entire Stonefield has changed the Almirals, you know, character, the way the Almiral County used to see, look at the architectural review board, and I had been working with Almiral until nineteen ninety-seven. And we had a very traditional red brick buildings, and now we are doing buildings with ultra-modern materials. So we see this context overall in the Charlottesville architecture, which is evolving into completely different style. We completed a graduate hotel, and I guess we went through this body before, and that, that's not a red brick building. This black brick, which I'm proposing, is on graduate hotels lower story, which was approved.
Well, I don't think there's anything wrong with having a little panache.
One last thing on the agenda is just a quick discussion about the comprehensive plan.
All right, thank you.
I had a meeting with, which was set up right after the December seventeenth meeting with council, with Kathy and Heather and Mike Murphy, to discuss some direction from council on their comprehensive plan. Mike has asked us to hold off on future meetings for a month, two or three months, while he puts together a memo moving forward with staff.